Okay. All right, thank you for waiting. A call to order this meeting tonight, the regular Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 11th, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I believe it's now time for Rebecca Vaughn to swear in new Commissioner Charles Lee and myself. So, we have to stand and repeat after you with...
Correct. Peter Chase and Charles Lee please stand. And then repeat the oath after me. I state your name.
I, Peter Chase.
I, Charles Lee.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will... Oh, sorry.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. These are oaths of office that we take very seriously. And, um, thank you for that. So, Rebecca, thank you. So now that we have a full commission with absent member at the moment, we will do an election of officers for Chair and Vice Chair. So, do I hear any motion or nomination for Chair?
I would like to nominate you, Peter, for Chair.
Second. All right.
Is there a roll call for the role and should ask a question?
Okay. On both?
Yeah, you can do... You can have two nominations and then a call for public comment.
And I would nominate Phyllis Metcalf to be Vice Chair. Second. Okay. With that said, we can do a roll call vote?
So, before you take the vote, you might want to ask if there's any public comment.
Okay. That's a new one. Is there a public comment on the election of officers for this commission? Seeing none, then we will close that public comment and, um...
I'll call the... I'll call the... Um, oh, sorry. Call the roll. Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair, well, Commissioner Metcalf?
Aye.
I'm going with the former names here. And Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Great.
So with that said, that suffices as the election of the officers and then the roll call is a separate element for tonight.
Absolutely. So, I'll call the roll based on the nominations that were just approved. Commissioner Metcalf?
Aye.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye, here.
Commissioner Friedman? Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
And Commissioner Friedman, as we've discussed in the past, is absent this evening.
Thank you. And it's... According to the email, it appears that she may not show tonight that...
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
She's... As we've... As we did with prior hearings on this, she was recused from the Corder Madera Inn... Recused herself from that application but may show at later for the second hearing on the agenda, which is the 200 Nellin Application.
Her note in the email is, "I'll try to do my best to make it tonight." Okay.
Yes.
So, thank you for that. So now that we're through the opening elements of this meeting, we go directly to the section where the public may step up and comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda. So, if you've got something on your mind you want to tell the commission, please step up to the microphone. You have three minutes. And state your name. And then... I don't see any volunteers. Oh, there's one there. So please step up, state your name, and we'll take note of what you are commenting on.
Good evening. My name is Sean McCormick. I reside at 20 Fairview Avenue in Corder Madera. Uh, this is my second meeting. The first time I came to one, it was for the building of the skate park. I don't know how many years ago, probably 15 years ago or something like that. But I'm only here today because I want to advocate for the revitalization of the basketball court over here in Town Park. Uh, I'm a big fan of basketball, as I'm sure a lot of people are in Corder Madera. And, um, I just feel like that court could be a really great place for young people, people of all ages, to gather. And at this point right now, it's a little bit dilapidated. It doesn't have lines on it. The full court has one hoop that's about eight feet and the other hoop is about 10 feet. And it just... It could be a really great place where people would come from all over Marin, particularly Corder Madera, to come and play basketball. It's in a really beautiful centralized location. And, uh, growing up in Corder Madera, I would... I lived on that big hill right there, so I'd ride my bike every day down to go to the Mount Tam Racket Club. But to play basketball there, you have to be a member, you have to pay, and I'm sure there's a lot of people in Corder Madera who would like to just come there and play basketball without paying for a membership at the Mount Tam Racket Club or the Bay Club. So I think that if it was revitalized a little bit, if there was two hoops that were the same height, there were some three-point lines on there, uh, and maybe some glass backboards with the squares on them, that people would gather there and it would be a really nice place for people of all ages to come and enjoy Corder Madera.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anyone else with a comment, not regarding something that is on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, then we'll close the public comment section. We have nothing on the consent calendar, so that means we'll go right to the continued hearings and we have a new hearing tonight. So, um, we have a stated end goal every night of 11:00 PM unless we vote to extend the meeting. So tonight, we'll put a intended time limit of 9:30 on the Corder Madera Inn rebuild project, at which point we'll move on to the 200 Nellin project if it's an appropriate breaking moment or we vote to extend the meeting. I will read this formal description of the rebuild item so that we're all aware of what this is about. This is a continued public hearing for consideration and possible recommendation to the Corder Madera Town Council regarding a final environmental impact report and applications by Renasant Hotels Incorporated for a new dual-branded Marriott hotel, including a 71-room Spring Hill Suites and a 104-room Extended Stay Residence Inn at 56 Madera Boulevard. Applications include a proposed general plan amendment, a zoning ordinance amendment, new preliminary and precise plans, including design review, and a conditional use permit. So there's a long history to this. I won't, uh, go back through it. But tonight, we have before us primarily new information relative to the pond of the project. We'll let the staff make their presentation, the applicant make a presentation, we'll make some statements, we'll ask for public comment. And I don't expect that we'll get to a vote on this tonight. So rest assured, that's not likely going to happen in an hour and three-quarters at this point to get through all of that. And I think we're going to ask for some other elements. So with that said, Adam, you want to start with some effort or...
Yeah, and I think... I think start with Commissioner Lee. I think he wants...
Sure.
Would like to make a statement on this.
I wanted to make disclosure. So, as a recently appointed planning commissioner, I reviewed most...
Would you like to call?
Hello? Hi. I think there's a button inside the button down below.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay. Sorry. As a recently appointed planning commissioner, I reviewed most of the record and I'm knowledgeable about the Corder Madera Inn project, but have not had time to review all the public comment. So for tonight, I will abstain. However, if this matter does not conclude tonight, then in the future, I reserve the right to complete my review and participate in the decision-making process.
Thank you. I hope that's clear enough for Town Council. I believe it is. So what that essentially says is that you will hear the evidence tonight and the presentation and continue to evaluate the lengthy record that exists on the Town website as well as documents that he's given. So with that said, Adam, would you care to start with your portion of the presentation?
Absolutely. Chairman Chase, Commissioners, here before you this evening as I have in prior meetings, the prior two meetings, mainly to give the floor over to the applicant who is responding to commission direction from, in this case, the June 13th, 2017 public hearing where the commission discussed additional information regarding the pond, partial pond restoration plan, and requested that the applicant do some more work with regards to that plan and at the request as well of Jim Martin, the Town's consulting biologist. And, uh, what I've included in the staff report, the applicant has prepared their response to the commission's direction for your review and for discussion this evening. There is a letter from the applicant regarding, um, their request for the commission's consideration regarding the access road and that it continue to be made... to be able to be open, not only for emergency access but also for their potential customers. There's a revised pond restoration plan dated July 5th, 2017. And if you recall, on June 13th, there was a request really to get another professional involved who is familiar with sort of marrying pond aeration techniques and engineering with the specific habitat values that were trying to be achieved by the applicant in this case. And so there was a consultant brought in Bronwyn Stone, um, to provide some more information regarding that. So that consists of the applicant's materials that were presented. You know, similar to prior meetings, I've... Staff's laid out some options for you to consider. We have not prepared any resolutions. Chairman Chase, you've indicated that it's likely not to be any resolution of this matter this evening, but we have, um, put forth a few options here, as we have in the past, just looking for direction from the commission. And staff is here to answer questions you may have and to do anything that would help facilitate this process moving forward, whether that's preparing resolutions in the future, additional environmental analysis and so forth, or just answering questions about some of the public comments we've received. So, happy to answer questions on that. Otherwise, I'd give the floor over to the applicant.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the Commissioners if they have any questions for you before we turn it over to Mr. Martin or the consultants. Phyllis, do you have any questions?
No.
Dr. Bundy?
Charles Lee?
No. Okay. So, um, would you guys like Mr. Martin to start out with a response or do you want to start with your presentation about the pond?
Yeah, I would request, as we've done in the past, that it would be the applicant would start and then Jim can come up and supplement as the commission desires.
Yes, great. Okay. So, thank you. You've got...
The remote also works as the arrow if he wants to... As a laser pointer?
Yeah.
The remote? No, that... It doesn't? One of them? Okay. I mean, it pulls them. You can do this. We were still working on getting a laser pointer that actually shows up on the screen. So, how do you do that?
You just hover. Hover over the middle button.
Adam.
You just move your finger. You don't have to move the whole thing.
Adam. Press green so they face the audience a little bit.
Yeah, actually, that's a good idea. Move this screen. This one? This one's still advanced, isn't it? Actually.
My name is Garrett Guerilla with Renasant Hotels. At our last hearing, as Adam mentioned earlier, the commission and Jim Martin had asked us to provide some additional information on the pond restoration plan. Specifically, we were asked to retain an aeration specialist to provide some assurance that the aeration plan we reviewed at our last hearing would really provide the additional habitat values and water quality that was contemplated in the restoration plan. In response to that, we did hire an aeration specialist. Her name is Bronwyn Stone. She put together a comprehensive aeration plan, which was included in the materials. She designed her own aeration system, very similar to the one that we presented at our last meeting. Same number of diffusers, same location, with some minor tweaks. But she did recommend that we remove the water feature that had been part of the original plan. Now, that water feature was originally in the west part of the site, over in this area over here. She had asked us to remove that because there was a concern... Well, we thought the additional water flow from this feature would be only a benefit to the pond. She was concerned that perhaps there could be some sort of unintended consequences from the additional flow provided by this water feature. So it's now been removed from the plan. It had been in that corner I pointed out just a minute ago. Bronwyn is confident that the system as currently designed would be more than enough to improve water quality and also provide the habitat value as contemplated in the restoration plan. Also, last hearing, there was some discussion about a control gate, adding a control gate and the connection between Lagoon One and the pond. To refresh your memory, right now, the hotel pond gets its water from Lagoon One through a free-flowing connection. There was some discussion about maybe gating that connection and converting the pond, hotel pond, really to an isolated system. That was something that Bronwyn looked at and that was considered in her report. Currently, there is... Every Wednesday, Lagoon One is flushed. And with that flushing comes a limited flushing of our pond. Apparently, that is beneficial to our pond, so that exchange of water. And according to Bronwyn Stone, the benefits of that flush really outweigh any benefits to be gained by really closing off that connection and operating the hotel pond really as its own pond. So that was something she was really recommending against. Also, at our last hearing, there was some concern or recommendation that we provide some additional information on Wigeon Grass habitat and how it would be created and sustained. That information has been added to the restoration plan, as well as some additional contingency measures detailing consequences, et cetera. And then finally, in terms of the restoration plan, we are asked to increase some planting numbers, especially with respect to marshes and grasslands, so we've gone ahead and increased those counts there as well. So, with respect to the circulation road, Adam referenced earlier, there was some discussion last time about perhaps converting that road to a green road and closing off public access. You can see that. That road I'm talking about is really right around in there, that circulation road, that 16-foot wide road right there. That's problematic for hotel operations, and I'll try to give you a sense of why. We understand from previous experience, and it makes sense, that hotel guests prefer to park convenient to their guest room and to use an entrance convenient to the guest room. I've highlighted... Highlighted here and red here, 76 guest rooms at the north and northeast side of the property. And guests staying in those rooms would prefer to park in the area that I've highlighted here in blue. So the 76 rooms would prefer really to park in the 73 parking stalls, again, highlighted in blue. We're short three stalls. We'll have to deal with that, but we're close. And those guests would prefer to use that entrance I've highlighted here in yellow near the pond. Now, it's difficult to predict guest parking habits exactly. There certainly will be situations when guests will, for example, park in the northern part of the site and fill up that area first, and it'll be... Which is important for guests to be able to flow to the other side to find a available parking there, or vice versa. Perhaps the parking is full on the east side, they need to flow to the north side. So that connection back and forth, from our operational standpoint, is really very important. Closing it off would force sort of a circuitous run all the way around the perimeter property to reach the other side. In addition, if we were to eliminate the circulation road, we'd have to provide some means of a turnaround at each end, either a cul-de-sac or hammerhead turnaround. And providing that would take a lot of space. It would result in lost parking stalls, as well as lost landscaping in and around the pond area, which is something we're really trying to avoid. Those turning circles or hammerhead turns would probably work fine for standard vehicles, but a number of our guests would be traveling with large construction trucks and perhaps tour buses, et cetera, and it would be really difficult for those vehicles to navigate those turns. So they would be forced into sort of a difficult and potentially dangerous sort of backup situation. And then finally, deliveries at the hotel would be received in this area here. This is sort of the service entrance. So vehicles would enter here, they'd circle around the property, they would drop off here. They would prefer to continue circling around the property to exit. If this was closed off here, they would have to deliver here, they would then be forced to back up, most likely into sort of the hotel turning circle, again, sort of a difficult, potentially dangerous situation. So there's a number of reasons that we consider the circulation road important. If the concern is aesthetics, we're certainly willing to consider other materials. Right now, it's considered as a really a paved surface, but we'd be willing to consider something like permeable pavers, which would give the area a more pedestrian feel and a better connection perhaps to the hotel. But I think it is important to keep in mind that this part of the site in particular, especially considering the berm that runs up all the way along here, is really largely invisible to the public. It can't be seen from the highway, it can't be seen from Madera, it can't be seen from Tamil Vista. So it really is an invisible part of the site. But nevertheless, we're willing to make some improvements there if the commission would like to see us use some of their kind of material in that drive aisle there. So that really concludes the information I was planning to present this evening. At this point, I could answer questions. Perhaps we want to turn things over to Jim Martin.
All right. Thank you so much for that opening, for that. It addresses a lot of it. I think some of the detail I would ask Mr. Martin to go into and see if it satisfies what we asked for and what was discussed as being necessary. Okay, sorry. Hang on a second, Garrett. Dr. Bundy would like to ask you a question here.
Yeah, Garrett, I understand the issue with having a complete perimeter circulation. Is there a limit that you would have on the size of the vehicles that should be going around there just from the standpoint of making the turns and such? I mean, would you limit buses to not over a certain length or trucks to not over a certain length just to be able... So they can maneuver around without running into things or damaging cars?
Well, we... There wouldn't be a... Would we limit vehicles to a certain size on the site?
A length?
A certain length, yeah. No, I think we hadn't considered that. I think most of our delivery trucks are of such length that they should be able to navigate around the site and around the perimeter road without difficulty, even tour buses, et cetera. That shouldn't be a problem for them. We don't get really the long tractor-tailer type of stuff. So I think, I think as designed, we could accommodate just about all vehicular traffic.
Yeah. Well, I think your suggestion that maybe you could do the permeable pavers, I think, would sort of have a calming effect. And potentially, if you could just have signs on sort of each end of the permeable pavers as far as the direction for the exit, so that people that were parked and backing out would avoid that to a certain extent but not be prohibited from doing it. So just to try to minimize some of the traffic that goes across it.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Phyllis?
To follow up on what Bob asked, what about the parking of these oversized vehicles? The tour buses, the construction trucks that are going to come in? They're going to take up more than one normal parking space.
Sure. The good news is there, when we have a tour bus, for example, they'll certainly take more than one space, but they're typically are accommodating a number of guests. So what we'll do there in that case is we'll cone off spots and allow them to park perpendicularly along what are currently parallel parking spaces, or vice versa.
So there's not a permanent section for those type of vehicles?
No, we don't think it's necessary because we should have the adequate parking to accommodate them.
Thank you.
All right. So to follow up on that, then the frequency of those types of vehicles is weekly, daily, monthly, approximately?
Maybe a couple per month, in terms of tour buses, for example.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So then, I would ask our biologist to come up. We had asked for a program to create a wetlands out there and an effort has been made. So, Jim, it's yours to address.
Jim Martin, Environmental Collaborative, the consulting biologist on the SEQA process. So I did review... Actually, I worked directly with John Zettner and Adam. There was some exchange back and forth in clarifying what we were looking for in terms of both the revised pond restoration plan and the aquatic water quality assessment. And I've reviewed both those documents that Adam referred to, the revised pond restoration plan and the aquatic filtration plan by Bronwyn Stone, who's an aquatic ecosystem consultant. And for SEQA purposes, they're... At this point, they're adequate. We have what we need to look at and evaluate the project in this revised form. They will... As Garrett mentioned, there was additional information provided with regard to Wigeon Grass habitat being created in this redesigned pond feature. Additional information was provided with regard to increased planting and performance standards around the different habitat types that would be created on the pond. I think it's important to point out, I believe, a misunderstanding that this redesigned pond is not intended to provide all the mitigation for the larger pond feature that would be largely filled as part of this project, that the applicant would still be required to provide a proportional contribution through off-site mitigation credits at Burdell or an alternative wetland mitigation program as called for under one of the mitigation measures. So I want to make that clear because I've seen some, let's say, confusion about that or heard of some confusion about that, that this is not intended to provide all the mitigation for the pond that's to be lost. The applicant will be required, under Town policy, to provide a minimum two-to-one replacement for any portion of the pond feature that's lost. So what we were looking at in terms of feasibility and this redesigned pond... So what we were looking at in terms of feasibility and this redesigned pond is whether it was going to work. And I think at the last meeting, I provided you some assurance that if you provide the water and you provide the appropriate zonation, the elevation zonation, you'll get the wetland vegetation to become established there. And the applicant's biologist has provided additional information on that. The idea is to create a shallow terrace around the perimeter of the pond and some larger Some larger areas in these locations where you can actually get marsh vegetation established. Right now, that pond feature doesn't have the appropriate elevation to allow for establishment of wetland vegetation. So with the redesign, with the reconfiguration, with the cross-sections that we've seen already, that vegetation should become established. There'll be requirements for monitoring and performance standards that have to be met as part of the regulatory agency approval, assuming this gets through the regional board and the Corps as an acceptable portion of the mitigation, which demonstrate that success criteria have been met and you've got the wetland vegetation successfully established. If not, the contingency measures that have to be taken to make sure that it is successful. The upland planting around this, the existing pond, and actually around this feature as well, the edge outside jurisdictional wetlands, that doesn't come into play in terms of the actual two-to-one replacement requirement. That's the footprint of the portion of the pond that was lost down through here, where the applicant will be required to meet a minimum two-to-one. This is basically intended to enhance the value of the jurisdictional water feature. And there are, as we pointed out before, there are limits to what's there now, there are going to be limits to what is in this redesigned plan. That's part of the reality of this site. But as I said, for SEQA purposes, we have what we need at this point to move forward and complete an analysis. I think the one clarification is with regard to Widgeon Grass. Additional information was provided on Widgeon Grass and the approach to creating a deeper water habitat, the appropriate elevation depth in the pond to allow for establishment of Widgeon Grass. And the applicant's consultant has provided more information on how they intend to accomplish that. But it's, to some degree, an unknown science, and there's no assurance. There's a high confidence, both on his part and my part, that this species with the appropriate elevation will come in, just as it did to this existing pond and other locations where Widgeon Grass has moved in. But there's no assurance that there will be success. There could be some unknown factor, and there's not a lot of science around the creation of Widgeon Grass habitat. But for SEQA purposes, we've already determined that the permanent preservation of over sixteen or over fifteen acres of habitat up at Burdell served to provide the compensatory mitigation for the potential loss of Widgeon Grass habitat as a result of filling the entire pond. So if the applicant is successful in the process of getting Widgeon Grass established here, it's sort of a bonus above and beyond what would be required for performance standards under the SEQA mitigation. But that was a change. I mean, initially, the applicant's consultant was pretty confident in the approach that they were going to be creating a permanent Widgeon Grass habitat in the deeper areas of the pond. And that now has been qualified, and understandably so. It is an unknown science, but it would, again, be addressed through the mitigation credits at Brazil. I'm trying to think through any other issues. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, I know there are. So I will start with Phyllis.
No, there are some advantages to be raised in the city you don't do with Widgeon Grass.
Okay. So no questions for Jim at this point, no? Or you want to pass on that for now?
Oh, yes.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah. Jim, my understanding from the prior discussion about Widgeon Grass is that because it's in, you know, brackish waters, that improving the water quality may not really be a good habitat for Widgeon Grass.
It's the opposite direction. So it's freshwater and brackish. So if, as an alternative design, one of the things that was considered was opening up this gate here and allowing the more saline waters to come in from shorebird, there's a higher possibility that is getting Widgeon Grass to stay. If this pond were completely retained, and the idea was just to simply improve what was there by improving circulation through shorebird, there's certainly a possibility that Widgeon Grass wouldn't stay because of the increased salinity. But the approach that the aquatic hydrologist is recommending is that the existing systems with the culvert that connects to Lagoon One remain in place. And so those water quality and salinity level issues shouldn't change. I mean, Widgeon Grass does express itself there in some years, and improving the oxygen, the compromised water quality characteristics, which is what this aeration plan will do, won't, should not be detrimental to Widgeon Grass.
Okay. Is that Widgeon Grass that's in the pond now, along with some algae on the surface?
Correct.
Okay. We talked about, Garrett talked about the gate valve on the culvert. My thought on the gate valve for the culvert was this would be something that would be utilized in the wintertime, when the water levels are low, because the lagoon is lowered as part of the flood protection system. That's not necessary from the standpoint of this pond. And so that was, that was my thought in the idea of having a gate on that, that it, the only time it would be closed would be to maintain the water level in the wintertime. So I'd just like to throw that out for consideration. I understand the importance of trying to get as much circulation from Lagoon One as possible.
Right. So there is a discussion on page four and five of the report by Bronwyn Stone about that gate and her concerns. Really, one of the challenges with the existing conditions to the pond is long-term maintenance. And so every time you add a variable with, you know, a gate or a control, it raises a question of who's going to do this in ten or twenty or thirty years? And where will that lead in terms of water quality and the long-term conditions of the pond? So I think simplifying her review is the degree that you can keep the system intact and without management is preferable. One of the ways they intend to improve condition, existing conditions in this portion of the pond for Widgeon Grass is by deepening the center portion, so that even in winter, right now, when you have the winter drawdown, you've got shallow, exposed, basically mud flat through this area here, everything up in this area. So the idea is to deepen the pond up through this edge and have a connection to that culvert, so that you have the deeper water that otherwise is going to be lost, where the Widgeon Grass actually overwinters. It doesn't express itself during the winter months, so it's not like you're going to be missing something during the winter months. But you want to have the appropriate elevation depth to allow it to become established in the late winter and spring months.
Okay. Could you also address a number of concerns about, the public has expressed through emails and letters about a buffer zone, required hundred-foot buffer zone around wetlands? And why isn't that being done in this particular case?
Well, we can let Adam chime in, or you may.
Do you want to start, Adam? I can tell you want to start.
No, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
All right. No, and I appreciate that. I had the comment as well. I recognize that was in one of the comment letters. There's a couple of things to note. I think there's, first off, I think there were some references in the comment letter to a countywide standard, which obviously applies to countywide projects, not in quarter Madera. We do have, in one of our zoning districts, and obviously, the zoning district set the development standards, in the public, I'm sorry, in the parks and open space zoning district, that is the only place that we currently have a standard for a buffer, required buffer, from a wetland, specifically wetland. And again, wetland as defined by that, through a delineation by the Army Corps of Engineers. That requires a hundred-foot buffer from a wetland in that zoning district. This is a different zoning district. Obviously, it's currently in the MX-1 zoning district, and it's proposed to be in the C-5 zoning district. So there is no zoning requirement today. That being said, there are some standards that are mentioned in the general plan, quarter Madera general plan, in one of the resource and conservation, resource conservation sustainability chapters. And it talks about, as an implementation program to a policy, that the town should implement zoning ordinance amendments that would set the standards for required buffers from wetlands. And it goes on to reference not only certain standards, a hundred feet for certain-sized sites, and it reduces down to smaller distances on lower, on more, on smaller sites. But it also talks about allowing for flexibility in certain circumstances, and even for allowing variances from that in certain circumstances as well. So while there are guidance, there is guidance in the general plan, those ordinance amendments haven't been implemented. There has not been a process whereby we have analyzed or studied or assessed what the appropriate buffer might be. And therefore, there aren't, I think the simplest way to say it, those aren't zoning standards at this point.
Okay.
And I would, you know, just to, I think, maybe Jim can elaborate on this a little bit. I don't know if we have an image of the delineation map, but the majority of the existing wetlands that were identified on the pond are at the sort of the north, yeah, in the location where Jim was pointing, which...
About 500 square feet.
Right. And there were some other areas along the edges of the existing pond, but even if you look at the majority of that, it is quite a distance. I didn't measure exactly if you were going to keep the existing pond to where the proposed building would be. So in any case, I just, that's sort of trying to surround that issue on a number of, from a number of different angles, but hopefully, that clarifies it.
Okay.
And...
Yeah, and Jim, maybe you want to add?
Yeah, so we're really talking about implementation program, RCS eight-point-two-B from the general plan.
Right.
And that's all under the policy RCS eight-two, which is about wetland mitigation. And RCS eight-point-two-a actually allows, there are exceptions that allow for filling of wetlands, and with the minimum two-to-one replacement requirement that we've called out for this plan. So I think it's a very good question. It's something that we will look at in more depth as part of our updated analysis and explaining feasibility. Clearly, the existing pond does not have a hundred-foot setback around it. And, you know, we've got the freeway on this side, the existing buildings here, and basically the hotel complex and restaurant around the existing pond. But those, that's an issue that we will speak to in this updated analysis, because we've got a different proposal here, which includes retaining the area of wetlands as part of this pond and part of the other jurisdictional other waters as well. So when we update the SEQA analysis, we'll address that and any other relevant general plan policies.
And just as a final question, Audubon Society really questioned the rationale for redwood trees, which I would also question. Does that really make sense? You know, this is, I mean, this is over bay mud. It doesn't seem like the right habitat for that. And then another question, just in regard to creating habitat for potential shorebirds. Are there fish in the pond now? I know there are fish in Lagoon One, but does the water quality not allow fish to survive in the pond now?
I have not seen fish. I haven't seen any documentation from the applicant's consultants indicating fish presence. I assume mosquito abatement may occasionally put mosquito fish in there, especially in the winter months, where you have higher water elevations, but I haven't, thinking back through memory, I don't recall seeing them even, ambush on the margins. The idea and discussed in the analysis by Bronwyn Stone is to improve the water quality enough that fish could actually survive there and provide the depth habitat and other needs with the wetland vegetation around the perimeter, that fish could survive there and thrive. That, you know, that's one of the intended goals of improving habitat here. With regard to the redwood trees, planet, you know, in my mind, we don't have, other than the couple poor, poor-conditioned coastlive oaks over here, this is surrounded by non-native species. The existing pond is surrounded, the black-backed night heron are occupying non-native eucalyptus and pine. The one benefit I see to these few redwoods, it's all we're talking about, this area here, is they do grow relatively quickly. They provide, they will provide afternoon shade in this part of the pond, and they provide perching habitat and substrate probably quicker than anything else. Whether it's used by certain species of birds or not is another question. But, you know, the redwoods right along the frontage here, you know, they're not great, but they are pretty good-conditioned redwoods, and they have significant height. I think, I assume that's one of the reasons they wanted to add them at that corner, to sort of create a focus over here. So I, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a little cluster of redwood trees over here, mainly because it'll give some height relatively quickly. And it's a, you know, it's a conifer. It's not, some of the other vegetation around the pond is going to be deciduous. So it provides that cover during the winter and early spring months, you know, similar to the eucalyptus.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bundy. Charles, do you have any questions for Jim Martin?
He's abstained. He's abstained.
Oh, that's right. So, but I thought he would at least absorb. No, he's abstaining tonight. Okay. He's not going to go there. All right. Sorry for that. So, Jim, a couple of questions about this. Planting plan that is pretty thorough with a lot of plugs and so forth, plans along the banks of what's there. So now, when the pond is drained, it's just a mud slope down to the bottom or to whatever lays in the bottom there. So with the proposed planting, that is an upland zone, marsh zone, all of those different zones that are a part of the banks and so forth, they will change what exists to something very different, I think, or what I'm hearing or reading, in that I wonder what will happen with the fluctuation of water elevation. Will this planting plan survive these fluctuations of water?
Right. So it's a very good question. The goal really is to provide the water and to have the appropriate elevation for the emergent vegetation to be successful. So the, this footprint is pretty much going to get completely regraded. You're going to have deeper depths here around the entire perimeter. You're going to have a shelf, a five-to-ten-foot-wide shelf, and then you're going to have these large, larger planes at these three nodes. And the idea is, elevationally, to replicate the one area we do, the pond does have wetland vegetation. So if you provide the appropriate elevation, you're going to get the plants to establish. So the goal... So the goal in regrading the pond, the remaining jurisdictional waters, is to provide the appropriate elevation to allow for success. So the goal would be to get these benches and these terraces that are created around the perimeter in these areas to have an identical elevation to this area of emergent vegetation, and to have this area deeper to allow for establishing a widgeon grass through that elevation. And that process of deepening the pond and creating these terraces will allow for retention of the permanent water over a larger area for a longer time. This marsh during some periods will still drain, but with an appropriate elevation, you'll have a larger marsh, even though it doesn't have water during some months, it'll have the vegetation there.
Okay.
So it's really a matter of appropriate design and monitoring, and during the process of monitoring, if it's not successful, the applicants required to go back and modify it until they get it right, to satisfy the regulatory agencies.
All right, so that said, I would like a little clarification, and so it's, if this plan works, and they do succeed with this wetlands around there and the grass, widgeon grass to grow, then it does become mitigation for the missing acreage of mitigation required by the SECO document, if it works?
Part, part of the mitigation.
Okay.
So it proportionally reduces the current full two-to-one mitigation through acquisition of credits at Burdell. But only for the footprint of this feature. They're not getting extra credit by redesigning, creating this feature here and a reduction, a proportion, you know, a larger reduction of Burdell. They still, for the portion of the pond that's getting filled, they still have to provide the two-to-one
Right.
mitigation credits at Burdell.
Right. Yeah, I'm not looking at that issue of reducing any of that, because there's still a missing piece of mitigation, but this would satisfy that, an effort toward that mitigation that's required, if it's functional then.
Yes.
Okay. So when you said this does not address the missing mitigation, that's prior to installation of this pond?
The .10 acres. Yeah, well, if this, if this feature is successful, you're, the .10 acre credit, then you're set, you've satisfied that missing component to the mitigation program.
Right. So all of that said, about the intent of the planting and the intent of the pond edges, then is there, it seems like there would be a discernible difference between what exists now and what should be there in a period of years, say a five-year period, or, and it should be discernible, it should be a new environment that's created out there versus what's there now? And what is that timeframe, do you think, for having it grow in, so to speak, to at least establish some of this wetlands?
Right. So that was part of, the wetlands actually will come in, if the elevation is correct, the wetlands will come in relatively quickly. Within three to five years, these should be saw, I mean, they should have filled out because you've got, you know, the appropriate growing conditions. In the, looking at the refinement of the plan with Adam and the applicant's consultant, we talked about this frontage here and retaining as much of this vegetation through this area as possible, including some non-native trees here, which are going to be, they're going to be thin but retained, and the idea is to plant natives, native species underneath them, so eventually we get native cover there rather than the non-native. So this edge, the native trees will be retained, and this edge through here, not the native trees, the non-native trees will be retained and supplemented with native plantings. And this edge, the non-native vegetation will be retained and supplemented with, the non-native trees and shrubs will be retained and supplemented with native trees and native ground cover. So there will be substrate for birds and, you know, cover as part of this redesigned plan, which is a benefit, it'll be immediate benefit once the pond is reconstructed. It's going to obviously take a while for the more desirable trees to take off and replicate what's there right now, the really dense, frankly, poorly maintained eucalyptus and pines that where the black ground night heron are currently doing the winter roosting activity.
All right.
And, you know, that's, again, is 10 to 20 years to get trees to be to the point where they're providing that type of substrate.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Martin? All right. That's very helpful, thank you. Doug and Garrett, do you guys have anything else you want to say about the pond at this point? Okay. So I think, Adam, we've heard then really what was asked to be brought forth for us regarding the pond. So at this point, we will open it up to public comment shortly, but I want to ask the commissioners a couple of things here. So, and I'm going to make a declaration before we go on. Do you guys have anything else you want to present, you know you want to present right now regarding anything else about the project? Okay. That said, I met with the applicants and Adam last week?
Thursday, yeah.
Thursday, to discuss some of the points that were in the meeting notes, and to talk about the pond, and talk about the project comments that we'd made previously, just to clarify them. And it was just a meeting about clarification, and as I said at the time, I didn't know if you would respond at that meeting or tonight and so forth. So then we'll have some discussion here, I think briefly, about the rest of the hotel, and then we'll open it up to public comment at this point. I just want to ask you guys if you have any other questions for the applicant about the design, not comments, but just questions about the design elements or anything. It's not time for a statement, but just if you want to ask these guys anything before we go to...
I just want to know if they have answers for the questions you asked them.
Right. And I'm hearing that they don't, right? So that we'll, we'll move on to discussing some of that shortly, and we'll get into a discussion about the other elements of the application. So, Dr. Bundy, do you have anything you want to ask these guys about the overall plan at this point?
Any change in relationship to the port curture that was planned? What was the, what's the sort of final plan on that, is that still being evolved?
Please answer, yeah.
Yeah, well, what we proposed last time, I think that was, as I understood it, that was the direction you wanted this to go with the, with the peak port curche, the single port curche that extended all the way to the building, so that's the one we had planned to go with.
Okay, thank you. All right. So at this point, the reason we'll go to public comment is because I know there's a number of people that want to speak, I want to hear what people have to say. We've got a armful of letters and notes and so forth from many people.
Right. And just, I just wanted to make that comment, too. We did receive a bunch of public comments today and in the evening. There are a number of emails, anything that we got before or after the packet went out on Friday is included here. And we, I think we got, also got a card copy, let's see, of a petition that was delivered to me before the meeting. I will provide that to you as well. I included a, I was sort of copied on this petition, and so I, the last page in your packet shows just that, the most recent update on that, there's a letter from the Audubon Society, and then several letters from residents of Corda Madera, and other residents from other parts of Marin. Oh, sorry, and those are, those were placed as well back to the back desk.
At the table at the back of the room, right. Okay. So what we're going to do is we'll open it to public comment, and then we'll take it up for discussion up here about the application as a whole or the pond, and we'll decide where we're going to go after we have our discussion. So tonight, for a show of hands, how many people would like to comment tonight? So, great. We have a timer here, so when you step up to the microphone, I'd like you to stay to the three minutes. State your name, anything, you can, obviously comment anything you wish to. The new information was most important to us tonight, but most of the letters that we received were not regarding the new information, they're about the project as a whole. And we will take that up after we have some public comment, so. Please, line up, I'm going to open it now. Let's start with a few people behind the microphone and start the public comment.
Peter, those chairs have to be moved so people can...
Right.
I'll be short and sweet, maybe not so sweet. I'm against this because I don't think any of you understand. I certainly didn't understand.
What's your name, please?
You have to go to college. Oh, I'm sorry, Phyllis. My name is Tiffany O'Hara, South Toledo Street, okay?
Okay.
I don't think any of you understood any of this engineering stuff. You go to school and you study years, and as our environmentalist said, none of this can be guaranteed. We have a very precious resource in those ponds. Let them alone and incorporate them, but don't risk losing them. We wouldn't let the Renaissance Hotel people come in and take over the Civic Center and Frank Lloyd Wright, that's a monument. And that's what those ponds are, they're a monument. They're our friends, they're our most vulnerable citizens. Now, if the Renaissance Hotel, hello, sir, hello. Now, if he wishes, and if he's so confident that his plan is going to work, how about a billion-dollar security bond? Put your money, or the Ressens money, whatever their name is, or your mouth is, give us a billion dollars and have a committee of citizens outside of our commissioners and listen to them. This is a huge gamble. Phyllis, be honest, did you really understand? Dr. Bundy, you're a doctor, did you really understand all that? I'm an artist, but I'll tell you what, I have two homes, and I have been in construction longer than the Winchester woman, and everything goes wrong in construction. I've hired the best, and it never plays out like it should. This will not play out. Look at the wind cup, did it play out? You know, years ago, I said, Corda Madera, the mall, I was for the mall, but build it with imagination. Build it so that when people come to town, they say only Corda Madera has that. We have Corda Mall Dera, that's what we have, Corda Mall Dera. Two malls, one here, one there, and now we're going into a hotel business. Corda Madera is its wetlands. Please, commissioners, don't sell us out. See, we welcome you, Mr. Renaissance Hotel, pay attention. We welcome you, hello. But you cannot come in as an enemy force. You can come in as our friend and incorporate the beauty that surrounds you. God already built it beautiful. Come and live with it, and don't decimate it. Thank you.
To me, the elephant in the room is, and I say this with all respect, I feel like there's two separate hearings going on, and has been. You guys are dutifully going through the weeds or widgeon grass to figure out the details. But public comment, both written and oral, unilaterally, uniformly is opposed to this project, not the land use, but in a fundamental way. And we are obviously not going to get these concerns addressed by your body, and I do say that with respect, because you seem like you've gone down the line with this mini-pond. I'll use the rest of my time just to tell a short story. I may have said some of this before. My wife always accuses me of telling jokes over and over, and possibly stories. Before I had my architectural practice 25 years ago, I worked for a firm called SGPA, who is the largest firm in San Diego. And we worked on a variety of retail and commercial projects. I didn't work on it, I will be the first to say, they did things like vintage oaks in Nevada, which was done on the San Diego office for Han Company. But we did, in our San Francisco office, we did a lot of projects that included new Safeways. And the point I want to get to is that Safeway has many chain tenants as a suburban prototype that they enjoy building, they know every detail in it, it's reasonably cheap to build. And if a town does not question it, they'll do the standard prototype. If they question it a little more, they will do what we call decorating the box, which we had to do. Phyllis is nodding. I think that's where we are with this particular project. We've been decorating the typical suburban box, so it's better than, you know, might come out of the prototype. But many of the Safeways that I worked on in San Francisco, like 16th and Metrel, if a tenant wants to be there bad enough, and if there's constraints that are severe enough, 16th and Petrel Safeway had its parking garage in the old White Front, used to be Seal Stadium under the store, and we designed elevators up to the main level. So a lot of this is whether or not this town wants more than the suburban prototype. This company certainly knows how to do something more innovative. We're not talking about it at this hearing. But let me just say, I guess in closing, because it seems like we're, you know, spending a tremendous amount of time, maybe some people would say torturing them, but I would just say, to whom much is given, very much is expected. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
I'm Barbara Solomon, I live at 109 Willow in Corda Madera. I've been a serious volunteer in this town since I moved here in May 1993. I love this small town. Corda Madera, Larkspur, it is a very unique community. We care about our schools, we care about our small town, we care about our police, we care about, my husband runs the summer concert series in Corda Madera, which is a huge gathering for the Twin Cities. I worked for the schools, I worked to fix up the Central Moon Police. What I get from this project tonight is whoever owns this hotel doesn't care about our community at all, and never has, and never will. And I urge the Corda Madera Planning Commission to think twice, three times before you approve this. This does not help our town at all. You're talking about tour buses in Corda Madera? Tour buses, are you kidding me?
Excuse me, ma'am, please.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Ma'am, please.
Where the hell do you come from? This is a small town.
Stop it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask you to, you know, step away from the microphone.
I'm not going to step away from the microphone, I'm going to keep saying what I do.
Do not speak to people like that, do not do that. You do not shout, you say what you have to say respectfully, do not yell at people, and if you're going to do this...
Tour buses in Corda Madera, are you kidding me?
Please.
No. I'm not going to step away. I'm not going to step away. I'm going to finish what I have to say.
Say it with respect and without yelling.
I don't think he deserves respect. You want to kick me out? You can. I'm a longtime volunteer of this town. I care about this community a lot. This project does not support our town at all. It has nothing to do with what makes this community great. And I really urge the Town Planning Commission to think twice before you approve it. This is not a good... It's not a good plan at all. It's terrible.
Thank you for your comments. I will ask that civility be a part of anyone's commentary.
Tell me, I'm on the table. Excuse me?
Sir.
My name is Robert Burton. I'm a former mayor of Mill Valley. I do not live in Corder Madera. I completed in June of this year 50 consecutive years of being on some public body in this county, and I'm still on two of them, appointed by the Board of Supervisors. So I care about the entire county, not just Mill Valley. I have two things that I observed right off the bat. One of them has to do with what you just said to Barbara Solomon, and that was respect. It doesn't seem to me that the applicant has shown respect for what this community wants. And so if he's not going to give this community the respect that it deserves and wants, I don't know why the community should give it back to him. I'm also looking at the symbol behind you to the left of where it says the Town of Corder Madera. And that's what's lost in this entire project. You're going to scrape around and look at how this is just pressed against the... As if you're trying to squeeze it down against the freeway. And talk about a buffer. I know you don't have to have one, but that roadway is right next to this squeezed-down remainder of a pond. And look at where the buildings are. They practically encroach upon the pond, which tells me that the applicant doesn't really give a damn. I also, in the oath of office that you took, heard that against all enemies, foreign and domestic, it looks to me as if the applicant is acting like an enemy of this town. And you have been... You swore, while you affirmed, to defend against that. And so I'm asking you to defend against that. I'd also like to point out that you don't get elected by the people. But this isn't going to stop here. It's going to go to the Town Council. And they do get elected by the people. So if you're not going to listen to what this community wants, I can almost guarantee the Town Council will. So I just don't get it. I mean, there are two outside bodies that also have to be satisfied, the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Corps of Engineers. And why the applicant wants to fight every inch of the way to get a few more rooms when it might not even be approved and spend all this money on tweaks to this terrible plan and unimaginative dumb architecture is just beyond what I can believe. If he just said, okay, this is what the town wants. Let's start with it and see what we can do. I also did a calculation, which I believe is correct. If the rest of the pond was retained, he would lose about 13 rooms. Seems to me that's not a good trade-off. So please, don't let this go any further. Don't waste our time. Don't waste your time. Don't waste the city's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Peter Hensel, Willow Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Burton. These words here came from Mr. Burton, actually. Preserve, restore, build around, make the pond an amenity. This is beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. This is Quail Lodge in Carmel Valley, and it has the oration, you know. I just second all the comments that have been made. If something is working, if we've got a habitat that has witch and grass, night herons, and they're happy there, why not restore that? Why do this thing that shrinks the pond to one-third size? And there's no guarantee that the witch and grass and the night herons are going to like it. I mean, the witch and grass, what they say in the latest staff report is that they're going to dig up the witch and grass that exists there from the substrate, keep it moist. I mean, can you believe this? Probably keep it moist for two years and then replant it, you know? And then the birds, what about the poor birds? I mean, you're going to knock down or cut down 79 trees, you know, to clear the site. I mean, are the night herons going to stay around? And are they going to be waiting for the trees to grow back? It just seems insane. I mean, I'm just watching my time here. I don't think you turned it on, did you?
You're right.
Yeah, okay. Well, then I'll just ramble on forever. Three hours.
I see three hours.
But anyway, you know, what Dr. Burton said, or Bob Burton said, is so accurate. This has just been a tweak-a-thon going on forever and ever and ever. How long can you do it? I mean, he can wait it out. He's got... This is just one of his six hotels, you know. He can wait it out. What about the citizens? I mean, he asks us to come back again and again and again. And what's really wrong, and Bob Burton just hit on it, is, you know, this project just got a big boost from the beginning. For some reason, it was thought that it was okay if he comes in and asks for the moon, you know? And he's been slowly, you know, making compromises. Well, okay, only 99% of the moon, you know, only 98%. Oh, yeah, we're such nice guys, it's going to be 97% of the moon. But, you know, what it seems to me is just like, it's like a crazy pole vault contest. I mean, you know, when you have a pole vault contest, you don't set the bar at 19 feet, you know, because people get over that. I think that people, contestants get over that, is what I mean. You know, you... Most people support a rebuild, you know? And they would get over the bar if it was a lower bar, but it has to be... Well, in the beginning, it was 187 units. Now it's 175. How much did it change? It didn't really change much at all. These concessions that we get every time at these meetings are like hot dogs passed out at Coney Island, you know? And they have a hot dog eating contest there. You know, I think I've been training for it for three years. Honestly. And I might win, except I'm a vegetarian. I'd have to go home and get sick.
Thank you, Peter.
Good evening. Carol Berg from Yolo Street. Tour buses in Corder Madera. Wow, what an honor. But I don't think that's much of an honor, bringing loads of buses weekly or monthly, as was reported. Observing the breadth of this building seems really overwhelming for a small town. We're a town. We're not a city. And then there's another project next door, and then the TAM, the new apartments that are not quite inhabited yet on... What's the street? Toward Redwood. What is going to happen to all this traffic? Where is it going to go? I'm really... If it can be refined and make modest, really modest improvements, I'd be 100%. But as it stands now, I'm not for it either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Denise Beck. I'm a resident on Redwood Avenue, and I've spoken before. And I just want to say, you know, why would you even consider a proposal that doesn't comply with the SEQA and won't be approved by the Regional Water Quality Act and Army Corps of Engineers? I would say, you know, kill the project. It's not a viable alternative. It's the citizens here, again and again and again, have come to you and said, no, it's not acceptable. The only acceptable... An Audubon is saying that when you shrink that pond by two, you know, you cut out 2/3 of it, you save 1/3 of that pond. You're not going to invite the witch and grass. The witch and grass isn't going to grow the right way. The birds aren't going to come and roost in the trees once you clearcut them, and they're not going to wait around two years to... Until the new ones grow in. It's just not viable. I'd say the only alternative that I would consider acceptable is Alternative 2, which the Planning Commission from the beginning accepted face value. It's 147 units, which will save the pond, and it's a superior alternative. You're still getting a 37% increase in the rooms, but you're not going to destroy the pond. I would also say don't cut any of those trees down. It's not okay. And save the entire pond. And if you can't do it, kill the project. Find another developer who has a better vision and is more of an environmentalist and more compatible with our community. This guy is just into building bigger and more. It's all for him. It's his own profit motive there. He doesn't care about the community. He doesn't care about the environment, and certainly doesn't care about the democratic process. But you need to, okay? Because you're representing us through our elected officials, okay? So you have to listen to us and respect us. This is my, what, fourth, fifth meeting? And I'm getting tired of coming and saying the same thing over and over and over and over. Listen to the community, okay? That's why you're here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Good evening. Geryl Page, San Antzomo. The existing Corder Madera Inn has a certain character and ambiance. It's a secure place in the community. It's with 110 rooms and, obviously, a unique wetland area pond. The replacement proposal asks you to endorse corporate design, expansion to 175 rooms, and filling all but 35% of the pond, dredging, grading, and waiting for 10 to 20 years while we wait to see whether the experiment worked. The commission's tools are a general plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, design review, and conditional use permit. These are legal requirements that can enable more density and greater intensity of use than is currently allowed. If you grant them, these are legal changes sure to be seized upon by subsequent applications and cited as precedent. The applicant claims need for greater profit from his inherited property to compel you to grant him special consideration. Yet this application is deficient because neither fiscal need nor environmental justification for the project have been proven. Approval tonight would have ensured flat, graceless design, the threat of a failed remnant of a wetland pond, and a deserted, abandoned heron roost, which is neither good nor responsible planning for Corder Madera. So I'm happy that you have decided there will not be a vote tonight. And I urge you to look a lot further. I think you are getting a message. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Cheryl Lanjanati, 8 Tamal Vista Boulevard, directly across from the hotel. I just want to say, it's my experience that the owner of this property has reached out to the community, to the neighbors across the street. I've spoken with them on an individual basis as they were doing a site review and taking pictures. This was already, you know, several years ago. The representatives from the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, including myself and another member, met with them about providing bicycles to hotel users so they wouldn't be using their car as much. They've modified the design so that shadows were not projected onto my neighbor's house on Tamal Vista Boulevard. So I think the accusation that they don't care about this community is just wrong. And I apologize that there's that sort of attack being taken on. And also, the notion that tour buses are going to create havoc in this community. I'm sorry, the tour buses do already use Corder Madera Inn. And I don't think that the project is proposing an increase. We already heard twice a month. So we can envision a lot of fearful things here, but I don't think they're going to Several years ago, I did an oral history project with Ed Tanner, who was a resident of Corder Madera from the 1970s. He now lives in the Tamal Pius. And he said it was rather ironic that he ended up at the Tamal Pius because he remembers when that project was under consideration, all holy hell broke out and people were against it. Well, now, it sits on the hill and no one gives a hoot. It has been incorporated into our community. And I think this project has merits and we're... I think it'll be like the Tamal Pius. It will bring... It will be used by our community for our families, for our relatives, for extended stay. And we shouldn't... We need to look at the whole project and look at the whole benefit, the benefits to our community. And I haven't even mentioned undergrounding the utilities, widening sidewalks, renewing sewer lines, changing the circulation pattern on Madera. Those are all benefits that the town will get from this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Good evening. David Kuhnhardt, Christmas Tree Hill. I take the opportunity of following the very gracious former, or immediately past Citizen of the Year, Cheryl, with a similar comment. The owner of this hotel has been at this town and at this hotel for, what, 30-plus years, 40 years? This is a member of the community. You know this. A year ago, when they were first planning, they came to the Lions Club, of which I was president for the last two years, and just laid out what they were planning on doing. Everybody grilled them and had back and forth, and the majority of the folks there said, boy, it would sure be nice to renovate this 50s-style exterior stair, exterior balcony, you know, crummy thing with a failing restaurant or failed restaurant. I think that I'm stepping forward because I think it's time to have a little bit of calmness in the conversation, to reinforce all of the hard work you've been doing. I'm very sorry for you guys that you've had to put up with all this for so long. Obviously, this is a compromise. I think that the hotel itself is less dense, less... Quite a bit less dense than the hotel that was recently renovated about four doors to the east, north, to the north of this one. It is less dense than a couple of the other small hotels in its current configuration. I rather like the design, which has got nothing to do with flat and everything to do with articulated. And you guys have done a very good job in reflecting back to the owner as over these months and improving the design, and I congratulate you on that. Finally, I think it's a good contributor potentially to our economy. It's a good contributor to the two different styles and types of visitors that we as residents here need, and that is temporary visitors, hotel... I mean, for various holiday purposes and whatnot, and also some longer-term visitors with the extended stay function for people who are in search of new jobs, perhaps some of the excess number of jobs we have within our own community. That will be very beneficial there. And also, for example, for adult children of very frail seniors who are dealing with their own properties and the end of their use of their own property in town. I think it's a very useful function. It has been, I think, carefully refined. I think this is an unfortunate compromise, but they're going to do a two-for-one off-site. And if I were a bird, and when I go to seek nature, I go up into the mountain. I go to Meere Woods. I don't go to 10 feet away from a four-lane highway. Good luck.
Thank you very much, David.
Cindy Winter, Larkspur. I feel entitled to make a few comments about the hotel because I spent 10 years swimming there. I know from those 10 years that there are very few tour buses who come to the hotel. I know from those 10 years that it was apparently the grandmother of the applicant who founded the hotel, and she built it, and it has been in the family a cherished jewel for all these years. And so the applicant does care about the community. I'm also a little bit distressed... I'm also a little bit distressed that many of the complainants seem to think profits are unimportant. I'm not talking about egregious excessive profits, but reasonable profits. There is a certain amount of money involved here. It has to be put to work. Otherwise, why go to all this bother and fuss and spending money on the application? I think they could sell this hotel and maybe buy two hotels somewhere else. And then where would the town be left? But you don't know what you're going to get if the Grealish family leaves. It is rundown, it has heavy maintenance costs, it's past its useful life. Something new needs to be achieved here, and I hope you'll help them do it.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hi. Utkarsh from Pixley Avenue. I believe some technicalities came out in, you know, past discussions, tour bus profits. Well, I won't go to the tour bus direction. I just have one technical query. Does that alternative two with 147 units, and with the current proposition, what's the difference in profits or revenue generation? And is alternative two really not viable? Is there any study that, you know, I can look at? Maybe rest of my time I can use in sharing a story because I probably come with a certain, you know, background different than growing up in Corte Madera. I grew up in a small town, which could have been Corte Madera, but unfortunately, it wasn't. Let's not get lost in nomenclature. There was a small road, a lane. It was called Nightingale Lane in a small town where I grew up. And as a small kid, I never saw any nightingales there. When I grew up, you know, my inquisitive nature, like, I would look around, try to find these birds. There were no nightingales. And I asked my dad, and eventually my granddad, he shared a story with me that a long time ago, probably 100 years ago or so, there really used to be nightingales. That was a pre-independence India, by the way. Nothing against Britishers, if there are any, but there was the divide-and-rule policy in action there, you know, perfectly, everybody for themselves. And apparently, there was a time when nightingales were there. But some rich family that owned the land or owned that place, I'm not, you know, making any personal insinuations.
Please direct your comments up here, please. Thank you.
Yeah, like, I'm just making sure that I'm not offending anybody with... Totally with all due respect.
Thank you.
And it's probably not in relation to you, but it just made me sad to realize that there was a history, there was a rich history, you know, nightingales. You see these beautiful birds in books and television, and they are not there. And I made a promise to myself as a small kid that I'm going to work hard in life, and I'm going to raise a family in a beautiful place, in a town where actually things stand for their name. And my kids, and my wife, and my parents would come with me to that place and see that, you know, that beauty still holds. And I'm seeing probably that same cycle is about to repeat itself here. I'm not going to run anymore. This is where I make my last stand. As long as it takes, I'm going to keep coming here, and I'm going to fight this thing off.
Barbara Faidus-Luxbur. Crazy Bird Lady, that's the usual name I get, and that's fine with me. I'm going to start with the end. I had this as something that I feel is so important. As stated in the EIR, the Town of Corte Madera Policy CD 1.2 require residential, non-residential, and infrastructure design that respects natural areas and ecosystems within Corte Madera. And you know, because I say it every time, I do not believe that the destruction of the pond habitat, which is the habitat for a stable colony of black-crowned night herons, is respecting the natural areas and ecosystems of Corte Madera. The herons can't come here and speak for themselves. These herons have been here for many, many years. Audubon has counted them every year. Their numbers have increased. Even the... Even your own biologist has said, "As soon as the construction starts, those herons will leave." There's a chance they'll return if they still have a roost, in my opinion. There's a chance they won't leave. The town of... The city of Oakland right now has a huge project trying to protect the night herons. They also take the ones that fall out of nests and run them up to Fairfield or Susoon to the rescue place. I wish Corte Madera felt the same way about the herons here. I feel they're extremely important. I don't... I know they're not the only birds in that pond habitat. Others were counted. But the thing... There are a couple of other questions. I mean, so much came up tonight that's new and different that we haven't had time to digest. But I know that the trees that you talked about replacing were going to be in three-foot boxes. And there was a description of how long it would take for these trees to become mature and actually become habitat for some of the birds, a roost for the birds. I think that's an important consideration. I think that removal of all of the mature trees is completely incorrect. I know you talk about non-native species, but how about planting... Leaving some of them and planting some of the trees that you prefer to see, not rip out everything. But as far as I understand it, this pond, even to build this pond, is going to require removing the old one, and then the excavation will happen for this new pond, as far as I understand. Maybe I'm not getting that correctly. Maybe you're not going to fill in the pond to make this new pond. But it just seems like there's... The process seems upside down to me. And I don't particularly think that waiting to see if the widgeon grass is actually going to grow to meet sequoia is really very promising.
Thank you very much, Barbara.
Good evening.
Hello, Jane.
Chairman Chase and members of the Planning Commission. This is very disheartening. I've lived here for 24 years across the street, and I would venture to guess that before this nonsense started, that there's three-quarters of the people sitting in this room didn't even know that there was a cesspool back there in the condition that the darn thing is in right now. And furthermore, I suspect that they don't really know why it's there in the first place. It was not created to be a marsh for wildlife. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that I was told by a member at the time of the Flood Control District that it was created to be a catch basin for overflow from the then roadway that went through Marin County that was higher than the area here, and it flooded. And I would also like to take this piece of paper, which has questions from various members of the community and answers from the town. And one of the questions is, what was proposed originally as a wild... What was proposed originally as a wildlife pond, is that true? Has become sadly degraded habitat without replenishing water flow. What are the reasons? And the town's answer is, people who live in the low-lying areas of Corte Madera don't realize that they are below the water surface elevation of San Francisco Bay at almost every high tide, including King Tides. The town goes to extraordinary efforts and, quite frankly, at extraordinary expense, not only to protect these areas from flooding, but also to provide as much tidal prism as possible in all of our lagoons. And that's the end of that question. Here's another one. The shorebird... Who decides that the slide gates are to be kept closed all year round? That was a question that they received from several people. The shorebird marsh and the edgewater lagoon are in two different watersheds. We do not mix watersheds. I didn't know that. I don't know where the two watersheds are. I haven't a clue. And there's a question about specific... Let's see. Why couldn't the slide gates be kept open during the dry six months? I've been here when there's no water in the darn thing, and I guess it was depending on Lagoon One for that. But the answer is, because if we did this, we would have about two feet of water above the grates of the drainage structures in and around Madera Gardens. I'm sure that the Grealish didn't want to be in the park business. They wanted to be in the hotel business. And as far as I'm concerned, you can get rid of the pond, let them build where they want on their property, and not give them the responsibility, which I don't think they've had before, to maintain that cesspool back of their property. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jane. That's Jane. Yes, she said, that's Jane Levinson. Yes.
Hi. Pat Ravazio, 427 Oakdale. The first thing I want to say is there are fish in that pond. I go there a lot. And there's also all these little shellfish and all these little barnacles and things that the birds feed off of. But there's little minnows floating there right now, if you want to go take a look. I have the... I think I have the most perfect attendance record for anybody here of attending all of the meetings for the last two and a half or three years, however long it is. And what I've watched is, from the beginning, there was this swelling of concern in our community not to do another Wind Cup, not to do another thing along 101 that makes Corte Madera look like the tiki-taki shopping center of Marin, but to do something the community could end up being proud of. And what I've seen is, the applicants have moved a tiny little inch at a time when they needed at the beginning, when we found out about the widgeon grasses, and we found out from the Army Corps, who I called again, and found out that there's... They say, "There is no way we're going to approve this." So the way I see it is, this is all wasting everybody's time because it could even go to the town council. And even if the town council, for some reason, said yes to it, the Army Corps of Engineers still says they're going to say no. So why are we wasting everybody's time? At the beginning, this whole thing was designed, getting rid of the pond. Once the pond was in the picture, the pond needs to be what the plan is created around. You must go back and ask them to start with the pond, start with the assignment to keep the pond, to retain the habitat, and see what they can do to protect the trees, create a green, natural, welcoming gateway property to Corte Madera, which is what it is. It is the Madera exit, it is the gateway to our town, and it should be beautiful, and it should be something the town can be proud of. I think Corte Madera should look at Columbus, Indiana, where they decided that architecture was important, and there are now IM Peys and Frank Lloyd Wright Marriott Hotels. Well, maybe not Marriott, but they've done a beautiful job with upgrading their architecture, which is what Corte Madera deserves and Marin deserves of Corte Madera. The last gift we gave them was Wind Cup. Let's give them something we can be proud of. And the thing is, it's not that hard. Skidmore, Owings &amp; Merrill, the finest architect in the world, has volunteered their services to solve this problem. It is probably two weeks away from having a beautiful solution that maybe gives them just as many hotels, rooms, as they need or want, and also does a beautiful job of protecting the pond and creating a beautiful, successful, environmentally sensitive hotel that, quite frankly, the applicant does not deserve, but will get if they'll only get out of their own way and let people help them actually make this happen. And if they don't want to do that, they really should sell the project, sell the property to somebody who will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. All right, if there's anyone else after this gentleman, please stand up behind him and get in line. Thank you.
Good evening. David Zeff from 650 Chapman Drive. I echo all of the respectful comments made previously by people in opposition to this plan. I greatly appreciate the time and energy and detail that the commissioners have gone to, to look this over. The smaller plan of 145 or 147 rooms would permit the pond to remain and eliminate this big issue, I think. The whole scale of the current offering is one of the main problems. The applicant himself demonstrated that his highest level of profit would be to sell the project. And I think that the commission should take into account the massive community opposition to this current plan, take into consideration the anger of the community over Wind Cup, take into consideration Marin County being one of the last places on earth. You should be able to defend nature and good design and implement the both. And consequently, encourage the applicant either to scale it down and make it more appropriate for the community, or to sell it at his highest profit level. And we'll get someone in here who can design it to fit into a community that cares about design and cares about the environment. I really appreciate your sincere devotion to your duties, which include enforcing and implementing the general plan and all of the environmental principles that are included in it. There's no reason to give a zoning change, there's no reason to give a general plan amendment. Those things were in there for a purpose. They're in there to design our town the way we want it to be. And we don't want developers coming in and telling us, "We're going to change our principles in order to fit their profit motive." Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. My name is Gary Haber, and my wife and I lived the last 10 years in Luxbur. And the principal reason I came up here was because I think I might be the only new blood here tonight. I haven't been a very good or community member in that I haven't paid enough attention during this period of time that I've lived here to what's going on around me. And when I got the email from the Audubon Society the other day and read through past minutes and so on, I thought, "Wow, this is really an important event in this community." And frankly, I'm a little surprised. My wife and I showed up very early tonight because I thought we wouldn't be able to get in. It would be so jammed with people, probably who felt as I did, that this is not the right size and scope project for this community. But, you know, I'm not an architect, I'm not a biologist, I'm not a town planner. I just felt inherently that it wasn't right, what was happening to the pond. And I heard a lot of comments tonight on both sides, some civil, some not-so-civil, on both sides. Anyhow, I appreciate the work that you're doing. I hope that you do get to a resolution, even though, from what I hear now, it might be meaningless if the Army Corps of Engineers says no, if the town council votes no. In any event, I think that everybody who came tonight and expressed themselves are being good citizens, and that's what I'm trying to do. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, Gary.
Lucinda Smith, Corte Madera. I just have a few questions to ask because I've expressed my dissatisfaction with the overall project previously. But I would like to see, since we're not going to see a vote tonight, that the applicant and/or staff provide an overlay on this map of what's being presented, which would show the original plan. And I think alternative two was the other thing, I believe, said that the pond would be retained. And so we could kind of see what it would be. If that was presented earlier, I apologize, I don't... Haven't remembered seeing it. This two-to-one replacement for the mitigation in Burdell... Where is Burdell? I really don't know where Burdell is. And how is this going to benefit Corte Madera? How does that benefit the Corte Madera citizens that are opposed to this project, that have come up with really good reasons? And so mitigation, but it's not even here? So that doesn't make any sense to me, and I would like to have some response and resolution as to why the Planning Commission feels that's a proper mitigation. I also would like to understand how the applicant feels that the pond can be encroached upon or completely reduced in size by two-thirds to expand his property and his ability to make profit off of this. I don't understand that. I don't understand that, and I would appreciate that there'd be some comment that would come back from town or staff, which would explain that to this poor little citizen. I think that the, if I understand correctly, the current number of units is 110. Marriott came back, if I understand, one of the letters that was talked about. 147 was part of their project as being a reasonable project for them to have a sponsorship or a name associated with. Yet we're looking at 175 units, which is a huge increase and an encroachment on what I think is a ridiculous expansion of property. So I would like to ask why the planning commission feels that it is appropriate to make the variance approvals that are required, why they feel that the zoning commission or the zoning law should be, could be changed that would benefit again this applicant, and why the changes in the master plan are being even considered. I just don't understand how a developer can come in, make all these requests, and then you all approve it, and then what happens the next time a developer comes in? Thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda. All right, anyone else? Because we're running out of time here, and I want to leave some time for the commissioners to comment. So, okay. We're going to bring it back up here, and this is time tonight that we're going to make statements. I'm not going to ask questions of the applicant at this point. Adam?
Sorry, I think we're trying to make sure that you're saying you're closing the public hearing.
I am. Yes, right. I'm closing the public hearing comment section. We're going to make some comments to the applicant. This is not going to be a dialogue with the applicant right now. This is going to be what we're responding to, and I want each commissioner to say what they have to say to the applicant and what they would like from the applicant at this point. I think that we have some things in mind, and we've heard quite a bit clearly, so... Dr. Bundy.
The pond, which seems to be the big issue for a lot of people, I've spent a lot of time out there and looking at that, and the biologist's report shows that this really is a degraded environment. And, you know, there's some mallards that are back there. Occasionally, there's some egrets. The greatest, you know, benefit is the black-crowned night herons that are there, and I think even if the pond was retained, they would probably leave during construction and may or may not come back. They may just take up habitat in some other, close by eucalyptus tree or other appropriate perching environment. And the smaller pond that's being proposed, I believe the habitat benefit from that actually exceeds the benefit of the full pond as it exists now. My understanding also is that even if the Army Corps of Engineers requires the full pond, it may end up just staying as degraded habitat. There may not be any requirement that that be upgraded, restored, improved on. So I think what has been proposed as the smaller pond actually offers greater habitat opportunity, greater wildlife opportunity compared to what we currently have there now. I also think that Garrett has been responsive from the standpoint of what's happened as far as setbacks, articulations, not encroaching on the neighborhood from the standpoint of the building. I've heard a lot of comments about they don't like, you know, corporate architecture, but I haven't heard a lot of comments specifically about what should be changed or what should be redone in relationship to that. So I do believe that this is going in the right direction.
Bob, I'm going to ask you, I've heard you say a couple of things about what you think is appropriate for the pond and so forth. Is there anything that you would want the applicant to bring back to us at this point?
I guess I would like the paver project from the standpoint of the circular road and some signage that would try to keep as much traffic as possible off of that without precluding that so that that could go through. Also, I guess I'm still stuck on my idea of the gate to maintain the pond level because I think that would provide, in the wintertime, more appropriate habitat, you know, for potential water birds. I'm concerned that lowering the water level is going to make it less desirable, less usable for shorebirds and such.
So are you saying then that, it's been discussed that having a control on the gate or just open? We discussed...
But thought was that the gate, a gate would be there, but it would only be closed in the wintertime when the lagoon level goes down. And currently, you know, what I see in the wintertime is, you know, very low pond level with mud flats. And, you know, maybe the grading and such is going to resolve that so that there, you know, will be enough water to maintain the marsh plants that are planted.
Okay, all right. All right, I can reiterate that later on. Phyllis, your...
Yes.
...statements to the applicant, please.
And...
Or questions, I mean, or requests of them to come back to us with anything.
Well, I've reached a point where I can't think unless my hands are on a keyboard, my fingers so, I have some written stuff, you know. There's been a lot of talk about the environment tonight, and people really haven't addressed the need for creative functional design, which is where my expertise lies. The design decisions we make now can either enhance or undermine our community in ways that can affect Corder Madera for many years. Approved projects should show creativity, not become part of the run-of-the-mill architecture we see too often. Good design decisions are needed if we are to maintain the attributes which brought us here to begin with. A few weeks ago, I spent a whole weekend going through two very large boxes that held an accumulation of three years' worth of studies, plans, renderings, other paperwork for this hotel rebuild project, community comments, and even the points made by Bob Silvestri in the Marin Post. I read through the notes I had taken during these hearings. I reread our current ordinances as respects the setbacks, the lot coverage, height limits, et cetera, and the variances needed for this project's approval. I also reviewed all the paperwork on the pond, its current condition and its role as a habitat, and learned more about Widgeon Grass than I ever really wanted to know. I found that there is only one thing that everybody agrees upon. There is a demand for quality hotel rooms in our immediate area. Nobody doesn't want a hotel. They want a nice hotel, a quality hotel. Review, there have been improvements and upgrades. The applicants have agreed to pay for several infrastructure upgrades on their own property and the property surrounding it. However, the building remains an uninspired U-shaped configuration because of Marriott's requirement that a dual-branded hotel must have a centrally located single lobby. The applicants will not consider a single-branded hotel, even if all the rooms were configured for long-term occupancy, and will not consider a different affiliation or a standalone hotel. I went back and thought about what I had learned when studying architecture, and there are elements of good architectural design that are needed to create projects, and I'd like to read them. One, have a direct relationship with the natural features or landscape in which they exist. Two, are more than ordinary. They are innovative, coherent, and integrated into their environment and community. Three, not only fit that environment, but enhance it by being part of its beauty and values. Four, take an approach that enhances the natural contours of their setting. Five, are designed to be sustainable, not just by using solar panels, but by using sustainable materials in their construction. One only has to look at the police station to see what can be done using sustainable materials. It's a platinum lead for a public building, which is not happening quite often. And number six, one that's very important, balance the applicant's wishes with the concerns and needs of neighbors and the community. Studying this project reaffirmed to me that meeting ordinance requirements with the needed variances and the habitat requirements of the EIR, plus the state and federal agencies, still would not make this project complement the natural setting of the property. No matter how hard I try, I cannot see this project meeting the qualities needed to achieve good architectural design that would enhance the visual character of our town, and thus I cannot support its approval.
Thank you, Phyllis. Out of that, there's essentially a statement that you would request a new architectural approach.
As I have discussed with you, there are just so many things. I compared it to a watercolor painting where there are just so many corrections you can make on top of the paint until you end up with muddying it, as the expression goes, which is essentially a muddy mess. I think the mistake that we made and the applicant made is when the Widgeon Grass was discovered and the pond could not be eliminated. Instead of trying to move the hotel and do a change here and a change there, the application probably should have been withdrawn temporarily while a new design was put together, which fit into the retention of the pond. At this point, we can't keep on making all these little changes, I think, for everybody's sake, and especially the applicants. It would be best to just start from scratch and design a hotel that fits the pond, the contours of the land, the environment in which it stands, and to stop trying, it's been three years. You know, we have to stop trying to make it right. It's not going to happen if we keep on doing it piece by piece.
All right. I'm not quite sure how I'll summarize that, but we will try to find a way to put that into something. But among the items that I would ask of the applicant is that the architectural system that's there is, as we've said, we've adjusted it, moved it around a little bit, and it still has some functional or appearance problems. So, you know, I've said that, and it's been said by many, that a new architectural input would be important to your process and that you obtain that, and that you look at design options that really create a more unique structure. It stayed the same throughout the process. You've done some great enhancements here and there, but it's still a facade, facade, facade. And I can see it in the basics of the architectural elevations that we've still got windows. You guys have tried, but I've said to you that it needs to go further. And I think that that has to start with considering a different architectural idea or at least a different architect to get there. And I'm not quite sure how you would do that, but it's important. The material use and the fenestrations are, have been modified throughout the project, but I think that it just, it needs to go much further toward what we originally said as the Larkspur Rose Lane model. It's, I've looked at some other architecture, and I can see a lot of enhancements and basic stylistic building shapes that could turn this into the feeling that it's a group of homes or a group of buildings rather than large buildings. And to break it up can be done. I think the architecture approach to that end is much needed. So we've spoken about the facades being broken. We've spoken about material use and how to deal with windows, with elevation, height, fenestration. We've talked about that before, and I still stand by that. We are at a point where we've had disjointed elements throughout the application process coming to us through no fault of your own, but it's been a long process. We have of late the pond element to this. That's a piece that can be incorporated, as you started to do. We need a total project plan, and this is in addition to what I just spoke about, but as a part of an application, the entirety of the site plan needs to include the bike path along Tamil Vista. It needs to show the increased landscaping to shield the hotel and get the pond design into a complete set. So we have various pages throughout time that show the improvements that have come. But when you do settle upon an architectural design, it needs to be a total package. We would expect no less than any other applicant, and I think that that's something that has to be established. Phyllis talked about sustainable design. We've brought it up before, that some elements need to be incorporated. You guys have spoken about the solar element to that, and I think that the structure itself needs to become sustainably effective. So when it's talking about heat gain, heat loss, cooling, all of those things, the structure itself can lend itself to those elements, and they can also become part of the interesting part of architecture. And that is missing from this. So we still have the flat facades, and they need to be indented or overhung or any number of elements that create natural building shading. There are other projects that have come before us that have utilized elements of the structure or added elements to actually shield the building, shade the building, do various things to make it a more sustainable design. They end up lowering the cost to run a building. They end up driving down the energy costs, and that's something that we spoke of a long time ago. What I will say about what you guys have done, I think, is an enormous effort that I don't think other applicants would do, and that is that you have listened extensively to many of the inputs. You have added the bike path along there. That was part of the Tamil Vista corridor that was sort of imprinted upon the area, and certainly it's one of those fait accompli things that you have to take in because that's what the town is designed. But we need to see that, and you guys have also volunteered to underground poles and utilities there. I think that was an early concession. The traffic improvements on Madera Boulevard there, you've agreed to make so that the, any traffic dangers would have a chance of being controlled over there across from the town center. I think that there's no doubt that all of us agree that the facilities need to be upgraded and improved. It's a thing that the town needs, that a good hotel functioning there is important. It is a part of the lifeblood of the community. People expect to stay there, and I think for myself, and I think if asked, these commissioners would all say they would like to see that hotel there, and they would like to see you guys there. Any of the comments that refer to you as newcomers or any of that are not accurate. You have been there a long time. You have contributed to the community. You have done a lot to help the community in many ways, from the chamber all the way through agreeing to hold events there in the future when the town needs an emergency shelter and continue to provide town benefits. So you have been a friend and continue to be a friend to the community. So you have been a friend and continue to be a friend of the community in that way. There's no doubt about it. And I think that that's a consideration to be remembered. The idea that you guys are new is just not a fair statement. So we've worked with you. I know that you've been looking at this for upwards of 15 years now. So it's something that's been on the books for that long in one form or another. Whether people knew about it or not, I don't know, but it's been out there and brought before the town in various ways over time. So I think that the pond would be improved from what it is. I think that you have to have a new architectural shot at this and bring it back to us. So all of these things come to me looking at Adam and saying, we just need to set this as a date uncertain and let the applicants come back with a response to all of this, what you would like to do. And you've heard our statements about what we would see as necessary to actually see something total and come to a place where we could vote on it. And voting on it does not mean that it gets approved, it means that we would vote on something. I don't think the application, as it is right now, is complete. It needs to be completed. You guys will have the choice of submitting it as you wish. We then can vote on it, and that is what goes to the council at that point. So I think we're at a date uncertain. We can let Adam create a list of elements that we've just spoken about for you to come back with. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile to actually get a motion from the commission to do what you have just described in terms of continuing the hearing.
Right, okay. So, thank you. Do I hear a motion to continue this with a summary of requirements for the applicant?
Move to continue to a date uncertain with recommendations from the planning commission.
If they can vote on it, I will second it.
Good. Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
No.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Does it pass if it isn't? You're supposed to have a majority of the whole.
This is a motion to continue the hearing.
And you don't have to have a majority vote of the whole complement, five?
No, not for a motion to continue the hearing. If you were voting on the actual project itself, including the general plan amendment, then yes.
We would have to have three. All right. So thank you very much. We're going to take a seven-minute break. I apologize to the Nellin applicants, but we'll take a short break. Thank you very much. I think everyone's in their appropriate position. We will resume where we left off, which was for new hearings. This one is entitled 200 Nellin Avenue Project. This is public hearing to review and consider adoption of an initial study and mitigated negative declaration and approval of design review and variance applications for a new two-story mixed-use building with retail on the first floor and offices on the second floor. So, Mr. Boyle, are you ready to give us the full?
I am ready. I was just whispering to Adam if anybody heard from Commissioner Friedman.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Maybe she's watching. Yes, good evening. The project is a new two-story building at the location of 200 Nellin Avenue. It's proposed to be a mixed-use building with offices on the second floor, offices of the applicant, and then retail uses on the first floor. Retail uses have not been defined. Two comment letters that came in this evening, one from the City of Larkspur and the other one from Caltrans on your places. We can talk about, a little bit more about those further on in the meeting. There was also, at your place, was a letter from Commissioner Friedman, who expressed some questions that she wanted to have put out to the commission if she wasn't able to attend tonight. So perhaps we can talk about those as well. Or not. The entitlements that are being asked for by the applicant are design review for new construction of the commercial building, three variances. The first variances, first variance is to have parking in the front setback, which is the Nellin Avenue property line, as well as to have parking in the street side setback, which is the Pfeiffer Avenue side of the property. The third variance is to have the building located within the side setback, which is the property line adjacent to Marin Municipal Water District. And I'll go into details of what's being asked for in those. The third entitlement is the sequel analysis, which is an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, which is in your packet. And through that sequel process, we determined that there were no, you know, significant impacts that cannot be mitigated with the mitigation measures that are listed in the Overall project summary, the project is roughly 8,700 square feet in size, two stories. The heights, the maximum height of the main roof is going to be 35 feet, and that's what code allows. The elevator tower is proposed to be 45 feet as well, and the mechanical, which is also allowed by code, there's an exception in the code that allows for elevator towers, mechanical equipment, and other things to be as tall as 45 feet. So the elevator tower is 45 feet, the mechanical equipment, the top of the screen, is 37 feet, three inches. The floor ratio is allowed is 34 percent and proposed is 34 percent. They're proposing 39 parking spaces, and 38 parking spaces are required. Code requires the entire site to have at least 10 percent landscaping, and they're proposing 16 percent landscaping. Basic site plan shown here. What do we decide on our pointer? Does this kind of work? Trying the new thing.
Maybe you have to be closer.
That's okay. The basic site plan, upper left is the proposed building here, just this big square. Parking lot in the front, 20-foot driveway aisle for fire trucks. Thank you. Pfeiffer Avenue on your right, this here, in and out, full access to the site from Pfeiffer, exit only from Nellin is the proposal. Currently, obviously, it's a, as many of you know, it's a used car lot. Currently, there is in and out only at Pfeiffer at this location. I'll show another site plan that shows that. This is a rendering of the east and north elevation, again, with retail on the first floor, large glass on the second floor for the offices, exterior stairway wrapping partially around the elevator tower, that element to the right in the dark brown, it's actually more of a dark red, is the elevator tower, which gives you access to the second floor, of course. With that, there is a materials board, which Adam is passing around, various materials that are proposed, including fabric awnings over the retail spaces, stucco on the elevator tower, stucco on many, main part of the building itself, as well as other materials. So bird's eye view, showing the site again from looking to the southwest. In terms of going a little bit more detail into height, I just highlighted here that, again, the elevator tower at 45, whoops, elevator tower at 45 feet to here, mechanical equipment hiding the equipment in the middle, going up to 37 feet roughly here, and the height of the building in red at 35 feet. In terms of a little bit more detail, the sequel analysis, again, initial study was done, mitigated negative declaration, outlined mitigation measures that reduced all impacts to less than significant. The initial study was put out for public comment from June 22nd to this evening. Only the comments, the two comments received regarding the initial study were the ones from Caltrans and City of Larkspur. Mitigation measures deal with air quality, geology, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology, and water quality and noise. The general, in terms of the circulate, the traffic study that was done, W Trans and Representative from W Trans is here tonight, did the traffic study. They were hired by the town of Corder Madera, they were paid for by the applicant. They did a traffic study based upon, you know, the proposed use. It's going to increase the number of trips, however, it does not create a significant impact to streets and intersections that raised any red flags to the traffic consultant. The report is conservative in terms of it does not include pass-by trips, so it assumes that all trips are new, which is, again, taking a conservative approach, so they're really saying that more trips are going to this location than probably actually will. So I don't know if that, I can talk about that in more detail if you want, in terms of the definition of pass-by trips. The project is expected to generate low volumes of traffic based upon the proposed uses, and there's no changes to the service level of the intersections or the roadway One recommendation from the traffic study and a condition of approval is that a two-way left-turn lane be striped on Pfeiffer Avenue. And this will allow for cars to, coming off of southbound 101, they'll be able to sit here briefly if they need to, to wait, and turn left into the site. That's the main focus of expanding this two-way left-turn lane to give vehicles driving into the site a little bit of refuge there. If you continue on this way, it's a left turn only, and you reach the intersection of Pfeiffer and Tamil Vista and head south. So that's one of the proposed recommendations and conditions of approval from the traffic study. This is just given kind of overall picture of how traffic moves. I apologize, it's a little fuzzy. Again, traffic coming both south on 101, and then also vehicles going on, onbound south on 101 as well. As you probably, many of you know, there is a project proposed by the town to change the configuration of Nellin. The town Public Works Department and the applicant have been in close communication regarding this project. Without going into a lot of detail, the proposal is to open up Nellin for southbound traffic only and also improve it for bicycles and pedestrians. In doing so, this project would result in a driveway across the project, across the bike lane, similar to what MMWD is doing now. Public Works doesn't have an issue with this project cutting across the bike path if the bike path is built in the future. So that's the Central Marin Regional Pathway Gap Closure Project. Staff is able to make all of the design review findings and the variance findings for the project. As I mentioned in the staff report, there's certainly regarding the height of the tower, you know, using the exception that's in the code, I've just pointed out that the commission may wish to discuss that with the applicant and whether they, that is an appropriate architectural feature. Staff has spoken to the applicant about that. Again, they use it as an architectural feature and also, of course, functionally to get people in and out of the building. So with that, again, Steve Weinberger from W Trans is here if you have specific questions of him regarding traffic, and the applicant is here also. And that concludes my report. Do you have any questions of me?
Thank you, Phil. Well, I will look to my right and ask Phil if he has some questions about what you've just provided for us.
On the traffic pattern, could you go back to that slide?
This one?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
All right. The opening on Nellin.
Mm-hmm. The proposed opening on Nellin?
The proposed opening on Nellin. Well, maybe I should start backwards here. I know how difficult that intersection is. So I was thinking, if you're leaving their parking lot and you're going to turn right to get on the freeway, it makes sense. I'd like to know, if people who want to turn left, that could be a problem and dangerous. If those people would then go out Nellin and come around, is that the purpose of it?
Let me point here, perhaps. So in terms of people wanting to leave the project from Nellin?
No, I am saying if people are there at the building for some reason.
Uh-huh, which is here.
And when they go to leave.
Right.
And if they want to turn left, let's say to go towards Redwood High School.
Okay.
Okay? That could be quite a traffic jam.
Yep.
So I was saying, since you're going to, talking about opening up a driveway onto Nellin. Could traffic that wants to go left have to exit through Nellin and then drive around? You know, go to Warham and then come back.
Sure.
Rather than try to come out with Stafford coming off the freeway and try, you know, Gold's Gym across street and all the things that are hap, Joanne's trying to make a left turn, a right turn is no problem because you get right on the freeway.
That is certainly a possibility. The traffic study did not indicate that that would be a substantial, a significant enough problem to warrant them recommending that this, that the left move be, you know, prohibited. So the traffic specialists did not think that was necessary.
Now, you said the traffic study person is here?
Yep.
If that person could respond, if that would help. I mean, it may not be significant, but will it improve?
We'll get them up there, yes.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll get them up there.
Okay.
When they have a moment. Did you have any other questions for Phil or staff regarding this?
No, I'll wait until after the applicant makes a presentation to discuss the building.
Yes. Dr. Bundy?
So Phil, the opening up Nellin to south, this would only be from Pfeiffer Avenue. In other words, you couldn't come off the freeway and get on Nellin?
Correct. You could not. And again, you know, this project is, you know, is planned by Public Works. It's not guaranteed that the Nellin change is going to happen. I talked to the Public Works Director today, and they are applying for funding again. He's pretty confident that they'll, I think he said 50/50 chance that they'll get the funding for the Nellin project.
Yeah, okay. And the other question, and I saw that this was approved three to two in 2008, and I went through those notes. Has the plan changed any sense that 2008, or is this exactly the same plan?
Very, very similar. Slight reduction in the size of the building, increasing, they've added bio-retention and rain gardens per the new code, additional landscaping, but fundamentally the same.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Bundy. Charles, do you have any questions for staff at this point that you'd like clarification about what he just presented?
Dinner.
Okay. Thank you. I think that as I look at this, the red line represents what element? Is that the Caltrans setback, or what is that?
No, the red line, ignore the red line. It's just part of our mapping. I honestly don't know what it represents. But it just, it's, when you go to Marin Maps, you get that.
Yeah, it's a red line.
It does look like Caltrans.
I think it's the town boundary.
Right.
That could be too.
All right. Okay, so.
They're intentionally.
You know, we'll ask the W Trans gentleman here, but the Caltrans letter points out several elements that they would be concerned about and encourages for sort of a conditional approval to be given to see how many accidents occur. I'm just kidding. You know, how bad it is and how much conflict. You know, how bad it is and how much conflict there is and what problems there are with having that lane. So, I'm just going to let the applicant make their presentation and we'll get underway here, so please stand up. I think Phil did, you, oh, the microphone's back over there.
Yeah.
Please be free to step up and.
Good evening, I'm Colin Russell, I'm the architect for the project. And it's good to be back here after almost ten years with the same basic project as Phil had informed you. You know, we, we went through quite a long design, design process with the clients because this building was actually, is actually intended for their use in terms of the office space upstairs. They're going to be moving their, their corporate headquarters operation to the, the upper floor from their current location right across the street. And so, there were a lot of considerations, one of which was the fact that it's a corner site and it has large setbacks on both street frontages, so that sort of limits where you can put the building. Secondly, the highest point of the site is the southwest corner. And actually, the trees that, that are shown on that rendering there are, are really not very accurate. If you go to the site and look at the story poles, the existing tree cover on that bank is very high and, and almost obscures the building from the MMWD side. I walked it after they put the story poles up and I was pretty amazed at how little you could actually see of, of the poles from that site. So we started out just trying to design a, you know, our objective was to design a little jewel of a building that tucks back against the trees with parking around the front and, and ample landscaping. And by putting it in that corner, we're, we're trying to use the natural slope of the site for site drainage. At the time we originally designed it, the bio-retention and, and stormwater retention requirements really weren't part of the code, so we have upgraded those and that took a little bit of doing because it, it's, it's hard to collect water on, on a small site enough to have it, you know, stand there for the required, I think it's twenty-four hours, but we got that done. We've done a number of things that help with sustainability, one of which is the photovoltaic panels on the roof. And the butterfly roof serves the purpose of actually screening both the mechanical equipment and the, the photovoltaic panels, which aren't the best-looking things in the world. They're kind of glary and shiny and a little bit weird. We also wanted to take advantage of the great views to the west of Mount Tam and also to the east of the bay, so we've got high glass on the second floor. This band that you see right here is a light shelf, so that's going to take sunlight, bounce it off and turn it back up into the, into the space, so we'll save on, on lighting costs. The retail portion is divided into four bays, so that gives you the flexibility of renting out the space to one big tenant, which is not that big, four thousand square feet, or four small ones, or any combination thereof. What else do we talk about? The only other point I would make is, one of the reasons we are requesting this variance is that there's a, a, a very sort of obscure pad, a, a paragraph in the code that states that if you're next to a public building, your setback has to be twenty-five feet. That would essentially make this site useless, you would have nowhere to go. So, we think that request is a reasonable one. I think we've done as good a job as I can figure out in sort of integrating the building with the site, allowing for adequate parking, you know, giving it good landscaping buffers, and basically tried to be a good citizen. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Colin. So, Phyllis, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Yes. I'm a big fan of your work, I want you to know, I, I have a question about this. The other building that you designed for the future, for, I guess, the sporting goods store and the gym that stands, for the same client?
Yeah, I, are you talking about the one right across the street?
Yeah, I guess whatever, I'm from your website.
Oh.
It has a future, something or other, let me see.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a building you've designed, so what's the question?
The question is, I like the idea. It's this one, you can, come here and see.
That was just a design study that I did.
Right, it's a design study for possible futures. You made the upstairs larger than the downstairs.
Right.
And I thought, even though it's a small building, it added a certain articulation that made it more interesting, and if it's possible to do that with this design that you have?
It would really be tough because we, we are at the maximum thirty-four percent floor area ratio for the site, and it was really tough to make that work and still provide the required parking. We were actually surprised we could get one more space than the required, and that was after going through iteration after iteration of the parking layout, so, you know, I, it's certainly possible. I'm not sure it would improve it, I think it might make it loom a little bit more because it's, it's, what, what we're doing here is sort of like the old Victorians, they're small footprint, but they have tall, high ceilings, so the, the rooms feel more spacious, so.
Can I just ask if it was a possibility because it's such an interesting look, I, it's something that's very striking when I was looking at some other examples of your work at your website and I thought that could make this even more interesting. The other question I have, I'm not a big fan of silos on office buildings, I think they go in barns. I see why you did it, I know why and all of that. Does it have to be, I guess it's red? It would be less obvious if it was that taupe color, maybe that might, I know it's a design feature and, but it's awfully tall and I was hoping it could be lowered even a little bit?
It probably could. We need some overage for the, the equipment.
Yes, I, I know.
And so, we could probably lower it a couple of feet and it wouldn't hurt it. I think actually it's a, it, it, it is a counterpoint to the, to the flatness of the building. You know, if you go to an Italian town, you'll see that there are many buildings at a certain height and then you'll see a tower here and a tower there and it gives it interest. If everything's flat, it becomes dull.
Well, I'm not saying to lower it to the roof level, but I was hoping it'd come down a little bit.
We could probably lower it a few feet, yes.
Stands up so much.
Yeah.
And what, what are your thoughts about not having it be red? What?
So, Phil can change that to, yeah.
There's some there.
Over here.
So, you know, I think lowering that tower, probably a couple, three feet is as much as we could get out of it.
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't think it should be the height of the roof. I agree with you, it should be taller. But it just sticks out so much and since it's really away from the building, it isn't even attached except for the rail, it just, as I say, it's kind of like a silo for a barn.
Right.
Well, it was intended to be a piece of sculpture, that's why we tapered it. That was the intent.
Okay.
That's about it, that's it.
Okay. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for this gentleman about the project that he's laid out for us?
Yeah, the PV panels, they'll be flat on the roof?
Yes, yes, we, we intend to recess them so that they really become part of the, the shape of the roof.
Yeah, no, I think it's a very dramatic, bold look, I like that. I, I think Phyllis's comment, and I know that the, in two thousand and eight, that was a question about the height of the tower and, you know, still leaving it as a dramatic effect, but maybe a couple feet lower.
Sure.
The, the other issue, you're doing a rain garden, but had you thought about rainwater capture from the standpoint that you'd maybe have twenty-five hundred gallons that then would be the first rain off the roof that would then be used for irrigation between
Like a cistern system, yeah.
storms?
I like the idea, it's kind of up to the ownership, but yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. I know there is one problem though with water table, so whether or not that's practical on this site, I'm not sure.
Geotechnical than we hire.
Well, we gotta, we can't let you speak from there, you gotta step up to the microphone, but if you do so, please say your name. Thank you.
My name is Sebastian Jakovics, I represent the ownership group. My father, Tom, is also here. Just a quick note, we own Fitness SF in the Bay Area and we've been here as corporate citizens since nineteen ninety-one and serving Cordermadera. As far as the bio-retention and everything else, the problem with the site is that it's clay, for the most part, and the water table's also just a couple feet below, so the actual ability to construct anything like that, bio-retention on there was not possible. We looked at it, we looked at the, the latest requirements from Marin County for water retention and, and percolation and so forth, that's why we came up with the paver idea and some other ways to, to store the water, but bio-retention for any significant amount was not feasible because of the clay and because as the site drops off, everything has to be put on, the entire site needs to be on piles. And so, just, and the water table is just, I think, about three feet below the surface, so any, any way to construct that sort of thing underneath would be extremely difficult to do.
Is, is this structure going to be on pilings?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay. And then the, the other thought I, question I had was in regard to mitigation in regard to particulate emissions, noise and greenhouse gases. Have you thought about requiring landscaping, landscapers in the future to go with battery or electric power rather than two-stroke motors?
We have our own landscaping teams that service all our properties, so that's something that we could do.
Okay. I, I think that would be a good consideration.
Absolutely.
The town is, I, I, we'll talk about that in a second, but I think the town is in process with that somehow at the moment. Phil, all right, Sebastian. Mr. Lee, any questions for these gentlemen?
Yes, I had a few questions.
Please, all right.
So, one was the finding about the materials and techniques for the durable, high-quality structure and landscaping, so I feel like when.
This is a, I'll just say, questions for them.
Yeah, so, so it's regarding that, so. With the tower, you say that it's a sculpture and I, you know, it's a stucco I see from the material part,
Right.
painted red. Have you explored higher-end finishes on that, if it's going to be this kind of iconic piece that's attached to the building?
I would love to.
Okay.
You know, it's all about expense, and this is going to be an expensive building because it's an unusual structure, but I, I'm not adverse to looking at other materials, I think that could be, that could be, it would be fine with me if the owners felt that was appropriate.
As far as the particular colors and fabrics and choices of the materials, we'd be happy to work with staff, both Adam and Phil and others in, in the town as the project, if it were to be approved, during the construction document phase and to bring it back to staff and look at some alternatives that they could work with as far as the construction materials itself.
All right, that's a fine statement to make, so, Mr. Lee, do you have any other questions for them?
Yes, I had another one. One of the comments from Caltrans and also, interest to me is, the previous plan was done in two thousand and eight, since then, the rise of electric cars has become prevalent. Have you explored having electric vehicle charging facilities at?
We haven't taken a look at, but we'd be happy to talk to Tesla and others to see if they'd be willing to install them on our behalf, we'd be happy to do it. My brother and I live in Kentfield here, we, we ride our bikes, this is our corporate office, it's our family office for my parents, for myself and, and our ten employees. So, we provide a lot of different things for our staff and, and for ourselves. I saw the Caltrans letter themselves, you know, we have showers. We built the original, where Elaine Pennell is right now, the, the building at one-on-one Nellen, that's one of our properties as well. Colin designed that, that property for us, I built it back in ninety-nine, and we have showers and bike facilities and all the things that Caltrans points out in their letter. But we'd be, we'd be happy to put a couple charging stations in, I think, if we could, if we could accommodate it on the site appropriately, I think it'd be fine.
So, and a few other questions, are you going for LEED certification or well-building or any of those?
We haven't, we haven't taken a look quite at, that far down the road. We are general contractors, we do own quite a bit of, of properties, we take pride in doing very high-end quality projects. You know, my parents have instilled resource management in our family, they're from Eastern Europe, and so we've, you know, we've been very diligent in saving resources, collecting aluminum cans ever since I was a kid, all the things that would, you know, really make a difference, honestly. So, we take pride in that, and we're a family-owned business, so we can look at things a little differently than a big corporation does, you know, we're local right here, our kids go to school right here. So, yeah, we take pride in our community, we're here to stay, and that's why we're building this building for our future. Would like to.
One more. So, also, have you explored doing an exit at, shared with, with Joanne's next door? I know that's not a property that you own.
No, that's one of the prop, that's actually the only property that we don't own in the area. But, we looked at that and there really doesn't, there's some elevation changes in there that would kind of preclude that, and we think that the exit onto Nellen before, which was there when it was a gas station, Nellen was actually connected all the way through, is actually going to be a really good idea. I commute in this area every single day and a half for almost twenty, twenty-five years, and by being able to open that up on Nellen and being able to come out and avoid the, the Tamil Vista interchange right there, especially during Redwood in and outs, and just being able to come off of Nellen, which is unused right now except for construction-related parking for the, for the Wing Cup project, I think is going to actually really help us exiting over here and any of the other patrons that come over here. But we have not, I think that's going to be adequate actually, and far better than sharing and trying to get agreements with the Wolf family that owns the fabric store.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Peter?
Yeah.
Since Charles brought it up, even sharing with Joanne's would not help because it, they're very close together, those two exits, so it's going to be the same problem of, you know, the traffic and trying to exit. I, that's why I like the idea of opening up Nellen, and I too remember when it went straight through and they closed it because they were trying to help the traffic and now it's made it worse, so. But, as I say, I think the best idea would be if you wanted to turn left, doing the egress from their property, instead you went out Nellen and drove around and just made the right turn, which could then get on the freeway or go to your property down the street, we have a sporting goods store.
We think the Nelling up, the Nellen opening actually opens up a lot more opportunities and avoids the Tamil Vista, the issues that, that stack up, especially when Redwood is in, in, in session and, and during the, you know, in and outs of Redwood High School.
So it will work?
I think it will work definitely. I mean, that's the way I'd go.
Yeah.
I live here in the Woodlands, so if I chose to go down Sir Francis Drake, I'd just come out of Nellen and make a left right there on Warnham and boom, right onto Sir Francis Drake, right underneath by the freeway and be home.
Exactly.
Okay, I am going to ask you a question and then I'd like your Wtrans guy to come up and answer a couple of questions. So, right now, not that this used car lot has a lot of traffic, right?
You'd be surprised at how many cars they do sell and how many people there are in and out of there all the time, and they have no parking either, because they're all cars.
So, if somebody wants to leave that, they have to gun it right now to cross over on to Pfeiffer there essentially, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so they, I mean, the lane starts right outside the exit area over there, so what you're proposing is just to add more left turn lane further back the road there a little bit? But as of right now, somebody has to, you're proposing to do more or less what they have to do now, and that is just to hit the gas and not get hit, right?
You got, you got excellent visibility. You got, you got excellent visibility both ways from that area, so you could actually see the cars coming down the exit. So, I think there's ample ways to get in and out. It did function as a gas station for many decades, as an Exxon station.
So, we'll get into some things here, but I want to ask your guy a couple of questions about the...
I do think that the parking, the traffics, the traffic consultant would probably be the best for that.
Yes, yes, so, that's right. I'm sorry, I apologize. The town...
And by the way, I've never even met, so this is a completely third-party that was hired by the town that did all these studies on your back.
You're in trouble now.
Just to introduce, Steve Weinberger from Wtrans. Again, he was hired by, by the town to do this analysis, and Steve himself didn't do the actual project, but he's well familiar with it.
Right.
Thank you. Well, welcome. And how would you preface or start your remarks about this and make a presentation?
Good evening, Steve Weinberger, Wtrans. And as Phil mentioned, I, I'm pinching tonight. Daleen Whitlock was the, our other founding principal, was the primary author, so you know. And I mention that because Daleen has worked on projects in this vicinity for well over 20 years from our office. So, I've reviewed the file and the numbers, and Phil and I have talked and can speak to your questions. But the conclusions are reached for Daleen's, and we'll go, we'll go from there. But, so you're going on to your questions?
Certainly. Well, I think that from my perspective, the first question I would ask you is about the Caltrans letter and the elements that they speak of, including their setback and the advisability of modifying that left-hand turn lane and so forth. So, they, they touch on a number of elements there without actually making some definitive yes-or-no statements about it, right? But they do talk about a trial and period for this, the condition that you're proposing. And they, they throw out a, a number of almost boilerplate statements about maybe the setback or various things that they have to review as the project goes forward. So, how would you respond to what they put forth?
Well, they, and they did ask for, you know, some simulation of the corridor. And basically, my observations combined with Daleen's findings concerning this lane. The, one thing to consider is this will be a wider driveway than it is now, given the number of cars that are parked there. And it will also be oriented more perpendicular to the street as now you got the angled approach. So, it, I believe you'll see from the site plan, it really takes a swing to bring it more perpendicular. So, of course, inbound, this will be the only inbound location, either turning right or what we've recommended was striping this area as a, what's, a two-way left-turn lane, which would then, then continue as the left-turn lane as it is now. So, it does give an official refuge area for left-turning traffic coming in. And of course, I, I think, and maybe the questions come up about the outbound traffic, I think the Nellin driveway is, is a smart move for this site, because it gives two options for outbound traffic. Whoops. Okay. And of course, the, the left turnout, the ability to make that turn will depend on the time of day and the amount of traffic. There'll be times of the day that, as, as was mentioned, there's good, good site distance from this driveway in both directions. And it is, you can make that turn during certain times of the day. Of course, other times of the day where there is more traffic, it'll be more, more difficult. I think users of the site will know the nuances of traffic and will have the option of the Nellin driveway connection and can reach all sites via Wornham. The thing to consider is this is not, not necessarily a refuge for left-turning traffic because of where the driveway is in relationship to this. It'll, it, it will provide some space as vehicles turn left. They won't necessarily pause here, but that added space does make that turn a bit easier than if it were just a two-lane road. The, the, one of the, I think the big issues that the Caltrans letter doesn't consider is this is a very low volume, traffic volume generating use, the amount of traffic. I think what, what Caltrans is asking for is sort of a simulation of this corridor, looking at queuing. I know Daleen's findings here, and she knows this intersection were right in terms of the level of impact, and that's based on the low volume of traffic being generated here. So, the instances of where you have exiting traffic and inbound traffic happen at the same time are, are, are pretty minimal because just given the amount of traffic, in an hour, you're gonna have about five to seven inbound. And the numbers showed like six inbound and 11 outbound total. Of course, all the inbound trips are happening here, maybe only about three left turns occurring in the peak hour versus about three outbound. Those all occurring at the same time are pretty remote. So, I think the, my, my main comment on the Caltrans letter is they, they didn't seem to acknowledge the fact that this is a low generating use. If it was a high-volume generating use, I think their comments and requests are maybe more appropriate. But, but, but given the low volume here, I think there, there might be a bit excessive.
Is it required for the applicant to create a transportation management plan? It, it says in their letter, and I don't know if that's the case. So, Caltrans says that, but I don't know what the requirement is.
So, under CEQA, there'd have to be a significant impact that can't be mitigated or a mitigation measure. And as this commission knows, the town doesn't have the authority to impose mitigation measures when they're not mandated under CEQA. I certainly will, Steve may want to address that, or Adam or Phil, but generally, that doesn't appear in the Wtrans report to support that level. There's a couple of things that Caltrans has put on their wish list, and again, this is a design review application with variances. You don't have any kind of zoning or general plan or CUP, so the commission is more limited.
And just to note on that, you know, there are, you know, one, one thing to discuss perhaps is, is that in terms of retail, certain types of retail, as we know, in this C3 zoning district do require a conditional use permit. Perhaps if that is, happens in the future, those things could be addressed at that point.
Thank you. All right. Excuse me. Any other questions for this gentleman?
Actually, not for him, for Sebastian.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm just curious, and it doesn't make any difference on whether or not I approve it. What kind of retail are you thinking of?
We don't really know. We honestly, we might just use it for ourselves, for our office as we expand, so I, we don't know. We kind of built some options here, work with the town on the mixed use, so there could be a lot of different things in there. There could be a chiropractor, for instance, downstairs. There could be a, you know, as, as the homes, the residences there, right, become available, those 180 residences, you know, we might look at some of the, there's hardly anything servicing this area. One of the problems with all the office buildings along Tamil Vista and this whole area and Redwood is you can't walk anywhere to get any services. You have to drive to either downtown Larkspur or to the shopping center to get a smoothie or a coffee or any, it'd be nice to have something like that where the people that can just walk. Remember, this is also a walking community. There's the people right across the way, all the businesses across the way. They have no place to go for a sandwich shop. They all gotta go to San Rafael. Everybody's gotta get in their car. So, the types of retail that we'd be interested in is looking at things that would, people in the neighborhood could support, walk to, the high school students, the office people, things that we'd like to, to, to do. We're not talking about drive-to retail. We don't see that as kind of a...
That's why I was asking, I was trying to...
Yeah, but we don't know. Honestly, we don't know until that kind of comes up. But as, as, as the, as staff pointed out, there are, there are, you know, conditional uses where those sorts of things can be revisited at the appropriate time, when we actually have something that is actionable. I know for a fact, we're taking the entire top floor for our corporate offices, and there's about 10 of us that work up there. Three family members and seven support staff.
Okay.
That's it.
So, all right, if we're done asking and grilling the applicant here, then we'll turn it over to the few people that want to comment about this. So, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. Would love to hear from the remaining public.
Jane Levinson, Tamil Vista Boulevard. You, people don't sew, do you? You should be at Joanne's when there's a lot of people getting their fabrics for Halloween and other, other such goings-on. I never come off southbound at, at that particular on-ramp. I think it's dangerous. I go all the way down to Madera, and I'm practically home because I live across the street from the movie theater, which is gonna be torn down pretty soon. There's gonna be a lot of traffic on Tamil Vista, and a lot of people coming from the north are gonna turn off there and go to the, whatever's gonna be down on Tamil Vista. A couple of places I know already, I'm not thrilled about, but I won't even go there. But it's a dangerous intersection. I do not go out of Joanne's onto, onto Lucky Drive. I go, and incidentally, do you know that their address is Tamil Vista, not Nellin? Joanne's, the Joanne's address, their front door is not on Tamil Vista. But on their side, facing west, the west exit, that's where I go out, and then it's easier for me to get on Tamil Vista southbound. That's not gonna be a fun intersection, if I may say so. It's gonna be terrible, particularly at night, particularly on a rainy night. And then to get into that left lane, I think it should be right, right turn only coming out of their driveway onto Nellin. And I think the same thing should have happened across from the Corder Madera Inn. Coming out of that gas station should have been a right turn only, so that nobody could come across and, and go the other way. There are other exits, but you really have to pay attention to that, to that intersection, and there's gonna be a lot of traffic. There's a lot of traffic because I sew and I go to Joanne's, and it's not easy, so. Oh, and one other thing, your color combination. I love the green trees, but red sounds Christmas to me, red and green. So, maybe we could make the tower another color that would blend in more to the landscaping and the trees and so on. And I'd like to say one more thing about landscaping. Please don't plant anything where the gardeners can come and shear them into balls, rectangles or triangles. I am so sick and tired of seeing that happen in Marin County in public spaces and private spaces. Cheaper to use those, faster for the gardeners, and they don't know how to prune properly anyway. So, please pick your landscape carefully and let plants that go in have time to grow. Don't jam them so close together that it'll be instant selection in two weeks, because, because that's what landscape architects do. They love to have instant finished planting. Two weeks later, they're pulling stuff out because it's all growing together. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jane.
Cindy Winter, Larkspur. I have some questions about the Caltrans letter, page three, the multimodal planning. This letter, at least on page three, impresses me as a boilerplate form letter with a few specific details plugged in. What is said about the various bike lanes does not make sense to me based on my knowledge of this intersection and my almost constant. Joining the BPAC meetings, I'm getting tired. It's late, so I'll be brief. But I would really appreciate it if the language about the bike path is serious and if it must be adhered to in some way, if the senior planning, if the senior planner, who's also a cyclist, I know, could get together with the BPAC and with me and with Sebastian and Tom and discuss some of these issues. For example, the red Class 4 bike path shown there, I don't think that has been approved. It comes from a Parisi drawing, and I believe that that entire Parisi drawing has not been approved. And this, this person who wrote the letter seems to think that when there's a bike plan, it's carved in stone. It's not. It's a list of projects that a jurisdiction would very much like to have, and they hope to accomplish them. But when they get into the details, they find there are some difficulties. I think it would also be possible to move that bike path to the other side of Nellin. But then you have to consider what happens at Wornham-Nellin and the connection there, and that brings in Larkspur. So, it's not simple, and I just thought I'd throw that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hi, Pat Ravazio, 427 Oakdale. I was actually here for the other one, but I wanted to stay for this because I saw the plan when I walked in the door, and I thought, now that's more like it. It's, it's a little like the Supreme Court said about something terrible. You know it when you see it. And just the look of this, the, the windows, the, the lines of it, it, when you see it driving by, it's gonna look like something nice and special. So, I appreciate the architecture work and, and the applicant for hiring a good architect. Just a couple of little things. In this location, being so close to the highway, you know, trees are just a magical thing next to highways. They buffer the noise. They actually buffer pollution. They actually suck the carbon. In, in places like Germany, they're insisting that highways be built with these big tree rows along now to, to, to block all of that. So, if you could really just, you know, focus on how to create something dramatic there with regard to trees, whether it's redwoods or, or whatever, and make sure, if we can, planning staff that, and commission that they're of sufficient noise, I mean, sufficient size to help, so that we don't have to wait 10 or 20 years for their benefit. And then the only other thing, you know, I was a little like that tower. It's funny, I didn't even see it at first, and then when I saw it, I was like, ooh, what's that? But a lot of times, good buildings do that. They make you think. And you mentioned about it being like this in Italy. But in Italy, it would be covered with a trellis, and there would be like trumpet vines all over it. So, again, I think greenery is magic, and if you could run something green up there or have some interesting trellises or something, it could really be, it could really be special. And I definitely support the locally-serving retail spaces, so more people will walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else who would like to comment? No, see none. All right, then we'll close the public comment section. We'll bring it back up here for discussion about what we want to do with the application. So, that said, I'm gonna start with you, Dr. Bundy, and ask you what you would want or if you'd want anything done to the application if you would approve it. So, we have a number of findings that we have to agree upon. I want to remind everybody that we have to accept the mitigated negative deck. Initial study is to essentially approve this thing, approval of design review and the variances for the building. So, there's a group of findings. We have to agree to them all. And he's got them up there, design review findings, explain how the project conforms to landscaping. So, there's a number of them, so. Dr. Bundy.
Chair Chase, could I just appoint him of order? Since you're so close to 11:00, you may want to consider making a motion now regarding the time before you start the discussion.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to continue it no later than 11:30. That'll give us more than enough time.
Second.
Oh, favor.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, I, I can make the findings on the variances and the negative declarat, mitigated, mitigated negative declaration. I, the, one of the questions I sort of had before was, you know, why is it that you're supposed to be 25 feet back from a public building? I, you know, I think as you go to the site and you look at it, especially you see the mature vegetation that's mostly on the MMWD side. that's mostly on the MMWD site, that really is going to blend in nicely and going to work well for this project. So I support the project. I have, I think, the same question that Cindy had about the bike lane on Nellin. I'm not sure that makes any sense, but that has nothing to do with the project. So I support, I can make the findings, and I support the project.
Thank you. Phyllis?
I can make the findings, and I support the project, though I would like to see, other than red for the tower. As a matter of fact, I was looking at the study for the negative declaration, and whoever printed this photograph, the colors didn't come out true. And that kind of looks nice, where it's a little bit more rusty than red.
It's supposed to be a maroon color. It's not really red, but that's the idea.
But this is warmer. It looks pretty.
Okay.
It's dark, it's this one here.
All right.
But I can support it. I think it's a very attractive building.
So you did mention lowering the elevator shaft.
The possibility of lowering it, but two or three feet.
Two feet, and at a minimum, right? And then maybe more if possible. And then the cladding of the stairwell slash elevator, pilaster, monument, whatever we want to call it, in a different color. How about materials other than stucco?
I think the materials all work well together.
Okay. All right.
I don't think that the applicant is going to want to do it in granite, or something like that. It would not, it would not be cost effective in any way.
Mr. Lee?
So I understand the applicant's need for conserving money, but at the same time, I also think there's a retail environment where there's new finishes being added to other shopping experiences in the neighborhood, and some of those are very nice. And so I, when I asked that question, I was merely looking to see if you would explore the same kind of grade of finish that other shopping experiences in the region are using. So I'm not even object to the red, and I like the idea of a statement piece. It's very much a gateway to Corder Madera, as you get off of 101. And so that's my impetus to query that, is, you know, so.
So that's one item that you're discussing about something there. I would echo that, and I would actually reinforce it to a larger degree. What else would you want to comment on, if anything?
I, I am happy that the client is interested in the EV, and so, you know, exploring that in the application as well.
All right.
And that's all.
Okay. So I look at the elevator column and wish that it had something else on it. Maybe it would be halfway or partially, you could use zinc or some other element to.
We're thinking metal.
Yeah.
Because we have metal eyebrows at the retail bay, so something that would be compatible with that or the same.
Right. You know, metal cladding would make a, or something of a more articulated nature. You know, you get it flat, something, it would.
Adam, if it gets it done, let it happen.
So I think that that would help it become an obelisk that everybody says, what the heck is that red thing sticking up in the air? So I really don't want that coming back. Couldn't they have done something better with the obelisk than just a red stucco column? Okay. So I think that staff could probably take in a set of materials and see what else it could be, you know? So you guys can work it out down the road. But I think that it's important to keep it from looking like a stucco column that could be in Tucson, or in San Rafael, or someplace else like that. It is just that, and people do those stucco columns to just be something. It needs to be more than just that, stucco column. I had agreed with Phyllis about, you know, stepping the building out over the first floor, but, you know, you could reduce the first floor and let the second floor hang over, you know, provide some shading for the first floor. You guys are clearly on a bent of what you've got there. I appreciate it. But I would say that we should look for the typical bicycle racks. You guys sit down and have a meeting with a rep from B-PAC, just to make sure that you've satisfied what they want for racks, all of that, just so it's on the record, it's in a place. They can say, we met with those guys, and they are happy to accommodate what we asked for. So you guys will need bike racks, or you take your bikes inside. I don't know. Because they run off. Right. So the EV, I think that the left-hand turn lane is something that's got to be worked out. I think that that's a potential conflict with Pfeiffer there. And I think that that's, I don't know quite how to condition it for that, but you have to get the town engineering department. They did sort of sign off on the left-hand turn, right?
Yeah, I've spoken with Public Works Director about the left-hand turn. And again, the left-hand turn pocket is recommended by the traffic consultant.
Okay.
Not the applicant.
All right. So I, you know, I can look at Tom and say, Tom, you know what we went through a few years ago about this exit? And because you guys had the property, it was of great concern about what to do here, what to do with pedestrians, what to do with traffic coming in. It was a big issue. And here, you guys want to build something and put a left-hand turn-in lane in there. You control all the real estate around there, but you can't control the pedestrians or the cars. So, you know, Caltrans isn't done with their Pfeiffer Avenue exit. One day, they're going to come back to us with something. I don't know what it is, but I think somehow the traffic, you guys and Caltrans have to just agree that they say this is okay. Caltrans has to say that that left-hand turn lane is not going to conflict with their intentions. That boilerplate about the right-of-way, you're nowhere near their right-of-way on this. Is that fair to say?
Yeah. Is that fair to say that they're nowhere near the right-of-way?
Certainly, the turn pocket is quite a distance from the right-of-way, correct?
Okay. So that seems to be there. So dropped in the elevator, getting new materials on the outside of the building, getting EV in there, meeting with B-PAC, just to.
I'm sorry, can I just follow up on meeting with B-PAC for anything specific regarding, there are bike racks proposed for the project?
There are bike racks, but then this whole Nellin Bike Way thing is just sort of out in limbo right now.
So then the Nellin Bike Way project is completely driven by Public Works. It's nothing to do with the applicant, and that.
But if the bike path is crossing their exit, right, then they might want to have some sort of address on their property that says bike path in front of you. There's striping, that kind of thing, all that, or signs that say you've got a bike path right here. All of that should be a part of.
Yeah. The main, the main purpose of me bringing up the bike path with the applicant and through all the months of working on this is to make sure that these two projects don't conflict with each other.
Right.
And to the best of my knowledge, they do not. So if the bike path happens, and if this project happens, they will, they will work together.
Okay.
Peter, can I ask you back? I thought you were talking about changing the materials on the silo. You're talking about all of the siding on the building?
No, I'm just talking about the elevator and stairwell thing.
Okay, good. Because you just said the building, and I thought maybe you were trying with the building.
I meant the.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
You called it the silo.
It's late. I'm tired.
Right. So that would be the only thing that essentially I would ask staff to work out with them, and make sure that they get these other elements on there. Drop the height of that as best as possible, and come up with alternate materials. So with that said.
I think we have just one more thing. On condition 43, which is permits from other agencies in light of the Caltrans letter, and their claim that they may have a right to require certain permits, and I don't think that staff are, just on the off chance that that is true, we think that 43 should be modified to include a specific reference to California Department of Transportation.
It's page 12.
Yeah, page 12.
Okay. Yeah, the Caltrans letter talks about transportation permit for oversized or excessive load vehicles relative to the project work. I don't know where else it might be in the Caltrans letter, but then, to your point, then it should be included in their statement to that.
How do you want to change the wording then on 43?
We'll just add Caltrans to the, to the condition of 43, along with BCDC, Army Corps, and others.
The only other thing I might add is that it's been, this has been going on as long as, I've known Tom, the guys here, so this is 2008. You must have jumped us up when you first got here. So it's been a long haul. Appreciate that.
And I would, just with regard to what I understand, this you summarize sort of where you may be headed with a motion in terms of potential conditions of approval. It sounds like we have clearly the height reduction on the tower element of the elevator structure. There's materiality changes to that structure as well. You know, I think we heard in response to a question from Commissioner Lee regarding the EV charging stations for vehicles, a willingness and a voluntary sort of willingness to explore those further and try to accommodate that request. I think from my perspective, it's sort of like the photovoltaic cell, you know, on roofs that we've seen in the past. There's nothing specifically that we would should, can, I think, require that sort of thing to occur at this point in time, although maybe at some point in the future, we'll have, we will look at that more holistically, like we talked about with some other things. But, but I think we can make that, I would just say that that condition of approval should be a sort of, discuss the request and the voluntary commitment that was discussed at the hearing.
Okay. Agreed. Yeah. So I think that would be, got it, materials on elevator. Sounds like he wants to convince Tesla to pay for it. So that's fine. So then we have to look at these separately. We have to adopt the initial study mitigated negative deck as one approval, correct? So, and then we would go on to approval of design review and approval of the variance applications all separately. Right?
Yeah, it's one resolution.
Actually, it shows us one.
You can do one resolution.
Okay.
It's only one resolution.
All right. We've, yeah, had to separate them in the past. All right. So do I hear a motion for?
I'll make the motion in the matter of an approval of design review and variance application number DR 15-004, variance-15-003, to demolish existing used car lot structures and surface lot, and construct a new two-story, 8,701-square-foot mixed-use commercial building with 39 onsite parking spaces at 200 Nellin Avenue, with the added conditions, do you want to read what you would just?
Tower, tower height, tower exterior materials.
Yeah, with conditions we discussed.
Yeah, the tower height reduced two feet, material selections on the elevator tower to be brought back in staff, and a voluntary review of adding EV to the project.
Yes.
And modifying condition 43.
Forty-three, right.
And adding the bullet.
We, I would just say, I would, in terms of the reduction in height, I think it would be better to say a minimum of two feet.
A minimum of two feet.
And let them come back with a.
Okay. Agreed. So those would be the conditions that you would use to submit for a motion.
Consider them submitted.
A second.
All right.
Okay. Call for vote. Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chairman, Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
All right. You want to read the appeal rights, Phil?
Yes, thank you. The application can be, the application can be appealed within 10 calendar days of today's date. Applications are at the planning department, and there's a $300 filing fee.
Thank you very much, guys. Good luck. And I want to see a juice bar in the new.
I just want to see it built this time.
No, but over in the gym, I want a juice bar and a coffee bar in the gym.
Yes. Yes. Lucky watercolors, by the way.
I'll be in line right behind you.
So he has one look site for his architectural stuff, and one for his fine art. He took up a year ago.
No, we're not done. They have an honor, they have an honorable Jane Levinson chair at the, when Tamil Vista Apartments.
When you have a chance.
No, we have, Commissioners, do you gentlemen and ladies have anything to report? Because we didn't have a city council meeting last week unless you were at the parade. There's nothing to report, unless you have something else.
No, Jennifer locked out on that one. It was her turn.
So I had a question. Can I ask a question?
In regard to?
In regards to earlier comment from the non-agenda business, the basketball court? Oh, sorry. Do the Commissioners also go to the parks and rec as well? So is that, would we inform them that a citizen brought that up, and it's more appropriate for that committee? I think you can request that staff can relay that. Staff, please relay that. Okay.
Anybody for basketball on four, if you.
I'll talk to Mario.
And now I'm staying up all night watching.
Slip a note underneath, Mr. Todd Dorff.
What? What are you saying?
New basketball court. Okay.
I'm all for that.
Mr. Director, do you have anything you would like to inform us of, from the world of?
No, although you should be, maybe Phil wants to report on this, but we should be, you should be seeing tomorrow, the release of the draft environmental impact report for the restoration hardware project.
Oh, great.
So we get to start another process. And then we will be scheduling a, a public meeting to allow for public comment on that draft environmental impact report, the way we've done that in the past. And it will be an opportunity to hear from the public primarily about their comments on that, without obviously any action to be taken at that meeting. I think we're tentatively looking at August. Phil, why don't you?
First planning commission meeting in August.
So that's it. The required review period is that short before a public hearing can be had, then?
Forty, it's a forty, go ahead, Phil.
The review period is 45 days, and about in the middle of that review period, we'll have the planning commission hearing.
Great, okay.
So we'll get input at that point, but then the review period will continue until 45 days from tomorrow.
Is the planning?
In answer to your question for, in general, there's no requirement as to when you hold that meeting to take public comments. I mean, you could literally release it and schedule it right away. It's typically not done, so that it allows for the community to have some period of time to review the document. But there's no mandatory time under SEQA that requires us to hold it as long as it's held within that first 45-day period.
And that meeting would be only to get input from the public on comments in the EIR?
Yes.
Correct, only on the EIR, not on the project.
And comments from the public.
That's what I mean. But it is limited to the EIR and the issues, and not the project itself?
Correct.
Correct.
Although we can assume that some folks may raise other comments. That's certainly true, as you know. Okay.
As long as they're not rude.
The only other thing to mention, I'll mention.
If anybody is interested, we have four slots available for the Tam Ridge tour this Friday, 10:00 a.m. See me if you're interested. Private tour by the developer of Tam Ridge, inside and out.
I'll be watching.
Preferably two of you. Yeah, preferably only two of you, so.
I'm not available.
Okay.
I'll be watching Wimbledon tennis, the men's semis.
Hey, I think they have a, you can, they have a model unit with a TV, you know.
Hey, I get up at 4:00 in the morning to watch this. That's why I'm.
Okay, so that's really then the extent of what you guys want to talk about.
Yeah, those are two, two updates.
All right, so we see what's coming next and I don't have anything to ask or anything about that. It is what it is, so.
And.
Budget in is coming next?
At this point, the answer is yes.
We are being haunted by motels.
Okay.
And the planning commission rules and procedures they updated will also be on it.
That's great. So next we have the minutes of June 13th.
There's some, I found some things that need corrections, though. I'll look for Jennifer since she isn't here. On June 13th, on page two, oh, excuse me, on page one, down at the bottom, number three, it shows the eyes as being Metcalfe, Friedman, Caldera and Chase. It should be Metcalfe-Bundy. You see there? And there's another one, I think it may be in the same minutes. Yes, it's also June 13th on page 10. Once again, the motion that's towards the top of the page. Jennifer's name was left off, but she was here to vote on that. You know, she missed the beginning of the meeting because of the being recused, but she was here for that. Yeah. Yes, we all did.
I don't, in, on page two, I don't recall what it was that Jane Levinson said about attractive nuisance concerns, but it's just.
She was afraid that putting up the trellis and bringing, you know, having all the kids come out on that terrace, it would be an attractive nuisance.
I see, that's right, that's right, okay. Did you guys get a species of vine submitted?
I thought they were going to go with the.
I'm not sure. I'll have to check with Doug on that unless you know. I don't think he has, but.
Didn't we kind of not specify and just that we were going to leave it to the staff?
I think it was ones that don't attract bees or something like that.
As long as it doesn't attract bees.
Not attract bees determined by staff, so Adam's going to do a sting test.
Do you want my pen that I have to carry around with me?
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve is corrected.
Second.
Okay. Voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you have to show Charles as abstaining, since he wasn't at the meeting.
Charles, that's correct. Thank you. Commissioner Lee abstaining.
Then the June 27th, 2017 meeting regarding Montessori School and Nicolau's final meeting.
Yeah, just a note on those, I would, we would appreciate if you'd take a close look at page four and five, just because those were some specific conditions of approval that you all wanted. One thing is you wanted a six-month review, and I added, you just said six months, and I added six months from the time if, if and when the council approves it.
Mm-hmm.
That was the main sort of editorial license that I took. What's that?
I'll move the minutes of June 27th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Just a final question on the budget in. I still have a lot of concerns about their plans for floodproofing.
Don't talk about it here, Bob.
No, I'm, well, the, I guess the.
We have adjourned.
We have to.
Oh, okay.
We have adjourned first.
Okay, so move to adjourn, anybody?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned.